Good evening and welcome to Sherburne's 247th Annual Town Meeting. I am Town Moderator Mary Wolf. It is 7:06 PM. A quorum of 10 voters being present and Town Clerk Jaclyn Morris having confirmed that the warrant has been properly posted by the constable, this meeting will now come to order. Although many individuals have worked extremely hard over the past year to bring us to this moment, I would particularly like to acknowledge Town Clerk Jackie Morris, Assistant Town Clerk Kelly Clark, and Administrative Assistant Tony Abriel, Town Administrator Jeremy Marsette, Assistant Town Administrator Diane Moore's, and Administrative Assistant Jeanne Guthrie. Also, Town Finance Director Deb Seifring, Mike Klein of DSC TV, and finally Dover Sherburne Facilities Director Sean McGee, who has been particularly helpful with setup of the auditorium and coordination of our electronic needs for the evening. There are, of course, many others, both residents and non-resident employees who contribute every day to making Sherburne a great place to live, so thank you to you all. A few housekeeping details. If you wish to leave the auditorium for any reason, please do so through the doors at the rear. If you leave the auditorium, you must leave your clicker and ballot with one of the officials at one of the registration tables where you came in. If you leave but plan to return to the meeting, ask for a pass as you leave so that you can reclaim your clicker, voting card, and ballot. Please set your cell phones to courtesy mode, and if you must take a call, please leave the area through the rear doors as unobtrusively as possible. We always welcome non-voters to our town meetings. If you are a non-voter, you should have received a name tag to wear and you must sit in the non-voter section located at the rear of the auditorium. Finally, and most importantly, please keep in mind the importance of civility in all public discourse. We should all assume in others the same good intentions we hold ourselves, so please treat one another with the respect and goodwill with which you would like to be treated. A few introductions before we start our business. The motions this evening will be initiated by Advisory Committee Chair Dan Sickel and Vice Chair Mike Winters seated here on my right. Also seated to the stage on my near right are Town Council Heather White of Petreenian Associates and Town Clerk Jackie Morris, who actually isn't seated but is coming down the aisle, so there she is. We all know Jackie. Seated on the stage to my far right are the members of the Select Board, Chair Jeff Waldron, Vice Chair Eric Johnson, and members Paul Dorensis, Marion Neutra, and Steve Sae. Also present this evening is Town Administrator Jeremy Marsette, Assistant Town Administrator Diane Moore's, Town Treasurer and Collector Pam Douss, Town Finance Director Deb Seifring, and School Business Administrator Don Fattori. And also present this evening is our State Representative James Arena DeRosa right down here in front. And I think that's it. So, to begin the evening's business, Select Board Chair Jeff Waldron and Advisory Chair Dan Sickel both have some brief remarks to share. Mr. Waldron, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. I'd like to also welcome everyone here tonight. We have a fairly short warrant, but there's some important decisions, so I'm really appreciative of having the input of the residents. Echoing the moderator's comments, we want to respect everyone's input and listen thoroughly to all their perspectives which may change your decision or may influence your decision, so it's very important that we're collaborative. So I'll just conclude by saying enjoy the process, and throughout the year, I want to help celebrate our 350th, it was a big anniversary, so thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Waldron. Mr. Sickel?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Well, everybody, thanks for coming this evening. As the Chair of the Advisory Committee, I wanted to share just a bit about the work of the committee this year that led to the report that everybody got in the mail about 10 days or so ago. Looking around at the group, I think many of you know what advisory does, but just a few brief words on that and some background. So our work, of course, is putting together a set of recommendations that come to town meeting in that report on the omnibus budget and all of the warrant articles. And that work spanned since last August over 13 regular evening meetings, plus two public hearings, one in the fall before the fall town meeting, and then one in the lead-up to this town meeting. And we evaluated each budget request, all the capital requests from every department in town, including the schools, and also all the proposed warrant articles. And if any of that intrigues you, I know everyone has advisory envy, the meetings are open, and I'd encourage you to come to the meetings, join in, and there's a lot to learn and a lot of opportunity for participation and input. So we'll get started late summer for next year's budget season. The outcome of that work, of course, is the report that I mentioned that came around, and that provides an overview of the town's budget situation, background on the proposed budget for fiscal year 2025, and of course, recommendations on each of the warrant articles. An added feature this year that we brought in is to estimate how each capital item, if approved, would affect the average property tax bill in town, and we also included some rules of thumb, budget rules of thumb, that we hope will be useful. So while committee members didn't always agree, and that's really what one would expect on a nine-member committee representing a cross-section of town, we did have many collegial and thoughtful discussions during our meetings, and I want to acknowledge and thank the members of the committee who did that work this year. So that includes Wassim Bosley, Mike Flanagan, Paul Palat, Nora Lynch Smith, Shelley Suber, Natalie Weir, Mike Winters, and Penn Young, and thank you all for, I think, about as good a year as we could have had working together on this important work. I also want to offer a special thanks, picking up on something that the moderator said to Jeremy Marsette, our town administrator, for his excellent work that facilitated the budget process and supported the committee's work. So finally, I want to highlight that our town moderator, Mary Wolf, is stepping down, and this is her last public meeting. So Mary has been a pillar in the community and has provided years of dedicated and extremely competent service, including on the Advisory Committee from 2011 to 2017, with a couple of those years as Chair, and since 2017 as Town Moderator. We've seen her at town meeting every year, occasionally in the fall. There's a lot more to the role that's not quite so visible that Mary has done just an extraordinary job at. I've had the chance to work pretty closely with her, and for any of you who don't know her, we've just been extremely lucky to have her expertise and her ability not to miss a thing. So next year, as a town resident, she'll be sitting with all of you, and I'm confident that she'll be there probably knitting and probably raising various points of information order and so on, so hope you enjoy it. So please join me in thanking Mary for her outstanding service to the town. Back to you, Madam Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Sickel. Thank you very much, and it's been a real pleasure to do this and to work on the Advisory Committee and basically to live in the town. It's a great place, so thank you all, and stay involved. You're here, you're active, please keep that up, we need it in this town. So speaking of which, being active at town meeting and in the town, is there anyone for whom this is their first town meeting? I applaud you. And I hope that you will find this to be an enriching experience, and I hope that you will come back and repeat it year after year after year. So then I would say, my script that I've written says that although many of you are familiar with the procedures that we'll be using, I would say almost all of you are familiar with the procedures that we will be using, so I hope we can move through this part of the meeting very quickly. I'm going to review them anyway so that everyone, newcomers and veterans alike, understands how we will conduct this evening's business in a fair, orderly, and predictable manner that will allow all to be heard while ensuring that the meeting moves along without unnecessary delays. The agenda for this meeting is the warrant, which was prepared by the Select Board and is contained in the Advisory Committee's report to the town, which was mailed to each household earlier this month. It was also posted on the town's website. The deliberation we will conduct for each item on the warrant will be initiated by a motion and a second from the Advisory Committee. Debate will follow and then a vote. Motion and debate on some articles will begin with a five-minute presentation by the proponent of the article who has previously filed a presentation request. Presenters will use the microphone here in the front, right below me here. Following any formal presentations, I will open the floor to voters who wish to speak to the motion currently on the floor. To speak on a motion, you must be recognized by the moderator, and to be recognized, please step to either the microphone on that side of the stage by the piano there, or the one in the middle at the rear of the auditorium, whichever is better for you. When you reach the microphone, please state your name and address and immediately begin your comment or question. Please do not approach the mic until there are only two other people in line ahead of you. Comments must be relevant to the motion at hand, and while comments must be limited to two minutes, please keep them as brief as possible. Please comment only if you have new information to add to what has already been said. You may speak a second time once, everyone has had the opportunity to speak initially, but again, please speak only if you have new information that moves the debate forward. We also have a timekeeper here at the front, if she could raise her red card. I'm asking her to raise that when there is about 10 seconds left on your time limit. I ask all speakers to be aware of that red card, and when you see it, please finish up what you were saying. I intend to be fair but firm in enforcing time limits. Please be gracious and considerate of your neighbors by winding up before I would need to intervene. Sometimes we have alternate motions or amendments to motions. Any alternative motions and amendments to motions must be submitted in writing to the town clerk. Forms for this purpose are available from Kelly Clark. Kelly, will you please raise your hand so that people will know where you are, up back there? There's Kelly. And no more than two amendments can be on the floor at the same time. A vote is first taken on any amendments to a motion and then on the main motion itself. If more than one amendment is on the floor and the amendments include number of units or lengths of time, the largest number of units and the longest lengths of time will be considered first. Again this year, in the hope of keeping the meeting moving forward as efficiently as possible, we will be using consent agendas to dispense with separate motions, debate, and votes on articles for which funding is straightforward and/or that we predict from past experience are likely to pass either unanimously or nearly unanimously. For each consent agenda, there will be a single motion and a single vote, and there will be no debate on the motion. However, if anyone desires to comment on or has a question about one of the articles or line items contained in a consent agenda, you may call a hold on that article or line item when I read its title. And as we do with the reading of the omnibus budget, I will remove that article or line item from the consent agenda, and we will vote it separately, following the vote on the non-held articles or line items with the opportunity for full debate. This evening, we have three consent agendas. The first consent agenda comprises Articles 1 through 6, which appear on the warrant every year. The second consent agenda comprises the five line items contained in the free cash -- I'm sorry, take that back. Yes, that's right. The second consent agenda comprises the five line items contained in the free cash portion of the capital improvement plan. We will address the borrowing articles individually. And the third consent agenda comprises the six line items contained in Article 9, substantial equipment, supplies, and service purchases. Again, let me stress, anyone wishing to discuss a particular article or line item in a consent agenda simply needs to call a hold when I read the title of that article or line item, and I will set it aside for discussion and separate vote after all non-held articles are voted. A last procedural point, I will read only the number of each article or line item and a title that summarizes it. The full text of each article or line item to be voted appears in the Advisory Committee report, as does Advisory's recommended vote and the reasoning behind it. We will be using, as we have now for several years, electronic voting at this evening's meeting. When you checked in this evening, you received a handset to be used for electronic voting. As you leave, please deposit your handset in the boxes provided at the exits. Be assured that each vote you cast will be completely anonymous, there is no record of which handset is issued to which voter. As to the mechanics of voting with the handsets, each eligible voter has a response card keypad. For each vote, push the button with the number that corresponds with the vote you wish to cast. 1A for yes, or I, 2B for nay, or no. If you push the wrong button by mistake, you do not need to delete a vote to correct it, simply push another button to register your vote. The last button you push before voting is closed is the vote that will register. You will receive immediate feedback when your vote is recorded. A successful yes vote will show a green light and 1A on the LCD screen. A successful no vote will show a green light and 2B on the LCD screen. If your vote does not register, you will see a red light and a circle with a line through it on your screen. If you get a red light or no light at all, please raise your hand, and a poll worker will bring you a new handset and will collect the non-functioning one. You may begin voting as soon as discussion has closed, but when I announce "Please Vote Now," a countdown clock will appear on the screen, and you will have 10 seconds to finalize your vote. During that time, you may change your vote simply by pressing the other button from your original choice. Remember, the last button you push before voting is closed is the vote that will register. When the countdown clock reaches zero, all votes are locked and the results will appear on the screen. For votes where a two-thirds majority is required, the results will show first as numbers and then will toggle to percentage so that you will be sure that the call by the moderator is correct. One final note, only votes cast are counted, so adding the yes votes and the no votes may produce different totals from article to article. This does not mean that there is something wrong, it means only that some voters chose to abstain on a particular article or have left the auditorium, or additional voters have entered the room. Again, if your handset fails in some way, please raise your hand and call out. Yes, and be sure you call out because the lighting in here is not great. A poll worker will bring you a new one and collect the non-functioning one. The other thing I want to mention right now is that when you are speaking at the microphones, please be sure that you speak directly into the mic so that everyone can hear you. Sometimes there's a problem with people hearing, and it's because people have turned away from the mic and they are not talking into the mic, they're talking over to the side. So if you can make sure that you are directly speaking into the mic, that goes for presenters and for commenters. Thank you. Okay, let's try a couple of sample votes. The first question here is about the "Still We Believe" Red Sox. You should assume that there has been a discussion about the question and that discussion is now closed. So as of this morning, are the Red Sox in third place in the American League East? Please vote now. And actually, that's quite apt because they are in fact tied for third place with Baltimore, so very clever, very clever. So that vote would actually pass. All right. Next question. Since we're clearly all pop culture mavens here, let's talk Taylor. Has Taylor Swift's Ages Tour been a huge success? Pretending that we have been debating the question and that debate is now closed, please And of those 59 people, how many knew that it was a trick question and that the tour is actually the eras tour, not the ages tour? Okay, so everybody's -- clickers are working and we're all in a good mood now? This evening, the legislative part of our meeting begins with the consent agenda. Specifically, Articles 1 through 6, annual reports, FY '24 supplemental appropriations, contribution to the OPEB trust fund, transfer of monies for the improvement and embellishment of cemeteries, revolving fund limits, and contributions to stabilization funds will be addressed as a consent agenda. I will now read the number and title of each article, and if you wish to consider an article separately, please call a hold when I read that article's number and name, and I will remove it from the consent agenda, and we will address it separately after all unheld articles are voted. I would note that this consent agenda contains one article, Article 4, for which Advisory is making a negative motion, so a motion of no action. A yes vote on this consent agenda supports Advisory's motion of no action. Mr. Sickel, before I read the list, would you please explain Advisory's vote for no action on Article 4?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So this is an article that appears at town meeting every year, and typically what it does is it allows a transfer of funds from the cemetery enlargement fund, which is generated from sale of cemetery lots, to be used for the care and enlargement of cemeteries throughout towns. Turns out this year, the amount of funds that would be transferred is very small, and there are sufficient funds in the appropriate account for the cemeteries to do the work that they need to do, and so given that, Advisory recommends no action on this article.
And Mr. Waldron, how did the Select Board vote on these articles?
Select Board voted 5 to 0 in favor.
Okay, so I'm going to read the articles and titles now, and if you wish to call a hold, please do so. Article 1, annual reports. Article 2, FY '24 supplemental appropriations. Article 3, OPEB trust fund. Article 4, improvement and embellishment of cemeteries, remember a yes vote is for no action. Article 5, revolving funds. Article 6, stabilization funds. All right, there have been no holds. Mr. Sickel, do you have a motion for the consent agenda comprising Articles 1 through 6?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move that Articles 1 through 6 be considered together as consent agenda articles, where such articles are routine and typically approved without significant debate, and with such articles moved as set forth in the Advisory Report and with the following additional information.
Before you go on, Dan, can we have the slide for that, please? Thank you. Whoop. No. Article 1 and -- the slide before that, Article 1 and Article 2?
Perfect. So continuing with the motion with the additional information. For Article 1, that annual reports be accepted. For Article 2, fiscal year '24 supplemental appropriations, which is the current fiscal year, that $100,500 be transferred from free cash in the treasury to cover fiscal year 2024 supplemental appropriations, $40,500 for snow and ice removal, and $60,000 for ambulance services. Article 3, other post-employment benefits or OPEB trust fund, that $100,000 from free cash in the treasury be transferred to the OPEB liability trust fund. Article 4, cemeteries, that no action be taken. And Article 5, revolving funds for fiscal year 2025 expenditure limits, and that would be Council on Aging revolving fund, $75,000, Board of Health, $20,000, Town Forest, $35,000, Farm Pond, $160,000, ambulance, $170,000, Elder Housing, $450,000, Parks and Recreation, $250,000, and DPW Fire Police and Facilities Fund, $50,000. And Article 6, stabilization funds, that $100,000 from free cash in the treasury be transferred to the General Stabilization Fund, and that $159,500 from free cash in the treasury be transferred to the Capital Stabilization Fund.
Second.
All right. The motion has been made and seconded, there is no debate on the consent agenda, please Motion passes 171 to 5. Thank you. Article 7, FY '25 Omnibus Budget. Mr. Sickel?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I will now be making a motion for the fiscal year 2025 omnibus budget. Following my motion and prior to any discussion of the vote, the moderator will read line items of the omnibus budget which express the total appropriations for each department. As the moderator will explain further after my motion, if anyone wishes to discuss any line item, please indicate by loudly stating "hold." And motion is as follows. I move that the totals for each department represented by the numbered items appearing in the Advisory Committee's fiscal year 2025 omnibus budget report to the town in the column headed FY '25 Advisory Recommendation be called over by the moderator, and if no objection is made, that such amounts be raised and appropriated for the purpose specified. Except that, where a transfer is indicated by a numbered footnote, the specified amount shall be provided by such transfer that the salaries for the various town officers, including those indicated by numbered footnotes, be fixed effective July 1, 2024, as specified in the omnibus budget, that becomes effective pursuant to this motion, and that any item to which objection is made be separately considered and disposed of in accordance with the vote of the town.
Second.
All right. I will now read the totals for each department in the omnibus budget. I will now read the totals for each department in the omnibus budget. As always, the full amounts for each component, salaries and expenses, are printed in advisory's report to the town in the column labeled Advisory Recommendation. Anyone wishing to comment on or question any amount may call "hold" when I read a department's name and amount, and I will set that line item aside. When the entire omnibus has been read, I will list the departments on which there has been a hold, and we will then vote all unheld items. Following that vote, we will address separately any held items, if there are any. So for FY '25, Select Board, $382,247. Legal, $80,000. Assessors, $169,788. Treasurer Collector, $221,938. Finance Department Accounting, $340,815. Advisory Committee, $4,518. Conservation Commission, $104,333. Planning Board, $61,664. Town Clerk, $170,000, I'm sorry, $170,907. Election and Registration, $30,196. Information Technology, $163,111. Town Buildings, $402,400. Sustainability, $72,635. Fire and Rescue, $593,177. Ambulance, $291,000. Dover Sherburne Regional School District Assessment, $11,613,962. Tri-County Vocational, $77,490. Sherburne Schools, including out of district, $8,241,810. Norfolk County Agricultural, $55,810. Department of Public Works, including street lighting, $1,282,572. Snow and Ice, $89,512. Solid Waste, $365,979. Recycling, $3,230. Cemeteries, $89,500. Board of Health, $180,335. Council on Aging, $204,398. Veterans, $6,860. Library, $622,341. Recreation, $150,000. Historical Commission, $3,850. Insurance and Employee Benefits, $258,464. Employee benefits, I'm sorry, general insurance, $258,464. Employee benefits, including OPEB, $3,430,549. Debt Service, $1,881,241. Reserve Account, $300,000. All right. There has been no, there have been no holds called. Yes. No. Oh, if you, yes, if you had a hold, then you should have called, all right? Okay. Please do, and identify yourself, please.
Doug Kingsley, 138 Farm Road. I'd just like the board to comment on the following. If I compare the 2023 actual to the 2025 budget, understanding that's a two-year difference, the Select Board salaries are up 36.3 percent, conservation salaries are up 94.8 percent, library salaries are up 26.6 percent, and police salaries are down 2 percent. I'd just like to hear a comment on why the large increases and the decrease in police salaries.
Well, are you calling a formal hold on those?
Yes.
All right. Would you listen again for me, please, then?
Select Board salaries, conservation salaries, library salaries, police salaries.
All right. So we have a hold on Select Board, Conservation, Police, Library, and that's it. All right. We'll discuss those. In the meantime, we will take a vote on all of the non-held items. There is no debate on the non-held items. Okay. So there has been a motion made and seconded on all unheld items, and we are voting on those. Please vote now. Okay, motion passes 176 to 11 on all non-held items. All right, we will now address each of the held items. Select Board, $382,247. Mr. Kingsley, would you like to ask a particular question?
Yeah, why is it up 36 percent in two years?
Would Mr. Sickel or one of the selectmen like to address that? Or Mr. Marsette?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jeremy Marsette, Town Administrator. I believe that the difference you're noting here in the actuals to the budgeted relates to the vacancy in the Town Administrator position, the position I'm currently in. In 2023, there was a period of time where that position was not filled.
Do you want to make a motion, then?
Yes.
This is now, we're going to vote the, um, Select Board salaries. Well, the Select Board entire budget.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move action on the Select Board budget in the amount of $382,247.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Please vote now. Motion passes 169 to 18. Conservation Commission.
Why is Conservation salaries up 94.8 percent in two years?
Mr. Marsette?
Yes, thank you, Madam Moderator. Similarly, the Conservation Agent position has been a position we haven't been able to staff fully consistently over the years, so I believe that the actuals to the budgeted reflect that.
Mr. Sickel?
I move favorable action and...
Does anybody know what was budgeted in 2023?
Excuse me. Deb, do you have that number?
I could speak to that. The budget, Michael Lesser, co-chair.
Can you, I can't hear you, Michael. I'm sure nobody else can.
Can you hear me? Okay. Michael Lesser, 54 Forest Street, co-chair of the Conservation Commission. The budget was basically about 3 or 4 percent the budget for FY '24, because it's basically just been going up by the cost of living amount. We just didn't have staffing at that time.
All right, Deb, if you have that number, that's actually what the gentleman asked for.
The budget in 2023 was $54,030.
No, that's just, yeah. Possible that I have it here. Conservation Commission, FY '23 budget, $98,041.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay.
Madam Moderator, I move favorable, I move favorable action for the Conservation Commission budget in the amount of $104,333.
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote now. Motion passes 164 to 20. Police.
Yeah, my question is that, um, over two years, the police salaries are declining 2 percent. I would point out that, well, it's my understanding that some Section B housing has been approved for Coolidge Street in the next few years. My understanding is that comparing the amount of Section B housing that's contemplated and comparing it to similar towns with Section B housing, I would suggest that we're going to have to massively increase the police salaries and the police force over the next several years, and we probably are going to need a full-time fire department. So this is simply a question of why is police salaries going down, and probably a warning that we're going to have to massively increase it in the next several years.
Okay. Jeremy?
Yes, just to speak to the budget numbers, the actual for FY '23 reflects that the police department salaries were over budget, likely because of staffing shortages and additional overtime to compensate. So the actual budget for FY '23 was lower than what the actuals were, so the budget for the police department has, had been increasing steadily over the years. What you're seeing is an actual for FY '23 that was over budget.
Thank you.
Madam Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
Can I add to that, and you can correct me, Jeremy? We also, we outsourced the dispatching service in the police department, so the dispatchers used to be staff members, and Tom's in the audience, he can correct me, Chief is up there. So we outsourced the staffing to save money by going to a regional dispatch center in Holbrook that services multiple towns, which saves the town money. So we didn't have dispatchers as employees any longer.
Thank you. Can you tell us roughly how much we saved by outsourcing dispatch?
An enormous amount. Chief Galvin's at the rear mic.
A public safety administrative assistant position that were covered under that FY ' '23 budget. Those positions were cut. They're currently being funded through the regional dispatch, through a grant from the state 911 department. So that, this year, would be roughly $300,000.
Thank you. Is there any other question or comment? Hey, Mr. Sickel.
Madam Moderator, I move favorable action on the police budget in the amount of $2,147,621.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? No? Please vote now. Motion passes 177 to 8. Library.
Yes, just wondering why library salaries went up 26.6 percent in the last two years.
Is there someone here to speak to that?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I think, I think that has to do with the effect that the library opened last April officially, so there were employees that had been budgeted in prior years but were not utilized, because we didn't hire them. So I think there was, I don't know the exact number, I think there was two new staff positions that were always planned once the library opened, and it opened last April, or April this year, so it was only a partial gear in some of the prior years.
All right, Mr. Sickel.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move favorable action on the library budget in the amount of $622,341.
Second.
Is there any further comment or debate? All right, please vote now. Motion passes 172 to 17. All right, Article 8, and if we can go to Slide 24, please. Thank you. For Article 8, each line item in the capital improvement plan for Article 8 that is excluded debt will be treated separately. The Town Administrator, Jeremy Marsette, will be, begin with an overview of the town's proposed capital improvement plan. Then there will be presentations for the individual items to be funded through exempt debt. Jeremy?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Jeremy Marsette, Town Administrator. First, I'd like to provide an overview of the six-year capital improvement plan, then a summary of the capital requests before town meeting this evening for fiscal year FY '25, and then project proponents will provide additional details for the requests. The town bylaws state that the Town Administrator is responsible for the maintenance and repair of town buildings, facilities, and property. Further, the bylaws create a capital budget committee to consider all matters related to capital improvements and to make recommendations to town meeting. The capital budget committee annually considers capital requests and receives anticipated future requests looking forward six years. Town fiscal policies adopted by the Select Board and Advisory Committee also provide guidance for the development of the six-year rolling capital improvement plan. This year, Town Administration and Finance Staff worked with the capital budget committee to fully update the six-year capital plan. with the capital budget committee to fully update the six-year capital plan. In September, guidance was provided to all town departments, boards, and committees. In November, town administration compiled information and met to review all capital requests with stakeholders. And in December, a draft capital improvement plan was published, including requests for fiscal year 2025 and for a period out of six years. The plan included narrative, project justification, cost estimates, proposed financing, and anticipated cost impacts. The plan was developed using best management practices promoted by the Massachusetts Division of Local Services. Since its publication, the capital budget committee, advisory committee, and select board have reviewed and helped refine the plan. The six-year capital improvement plan encompassing the fiscal years 2025 to 2030 includes 55 capital requests for an estimated cost of $16 million. Preliminary funding sources include exempt borrowing, free cash, and state grants. The plan also includes requests from a number of town departments, boards, and commissions. On the right, the capital requests are shown by category. Infrastructure, including roadways, stormwater, and the like, represent the largest category. Fortunately, the town received supplemental annual funding from the Commonwealth to support roadway reconstruction, and this year received at one time a grant of $850,000 towards the reconstruction of an intersection within the community. Facilities repair and replacement is the second largest category, which includes projects for local and regional school buildings and other town buildings and facilities. And then the third smallest would be the routine replacement of vehicles and equipment, form the third largest category. Now stepping back, from the six-year plan, we can focus on the capital request before you for approval this evening. The capital requests for fiscal year 2025 are separated into three categories: exempt borrowing and free cash-funded capital presented in Warren Article 8, and free cash-funded equipment, supplies, service purchases presented in Warren Article 9. This slide shows a breakdown of requests by department and by proposed funding source. Your first actions under Warren Article 8 will be consideration of eight projects to be funded by exempt borrowing. Here's a summary of those requests shown on this slide. Further details on these requests were provided by the project proponents.
Thank you, Jeremy. Okay, if we can have slide 25 up now. We have a presentation here by Dawn Fratore, Dover Sherburne School's business manager, on Article 8, Item 1, HVAC for Pine Hill School.
Good evening. I'm, as Mary said, Dawn Fratore, the business administrator for the school district, and I'm presenting this capital request this evening on behalf of the Sherburne School Committee, specifically the chair, Dennis Quant, who unfortunately was able to attend this evening. So with climate change, more days at the beginning and end of the school year have been hot and humid, and it's even more difficult to manage it in a building like Pine Hill when we have the heat waves that last two to three days. These days are not really conducive to effective teaching or learning. We have experimented with renting commercial portable AC units. Last fall, we actually transported students to the new library to take advantage of their AC spaces during the school day. And in two instances over the last six to eight years, we've actually had to declare an early release on two school days because the building just actually wasn't conducive to keeping staff and students in the building. As another point of reference, I will say that Pine Hill is the only school of our four schools that doesn't have any mechanical air cooling. So the school committee really set a goal this year. We talk about it every year, but they were very focused this year to identify potential cooling strategies in order to address this issue. So if you look at the slides, we are giving you a little bit about the background. We felt it was really important to bring the town along with us in this work due to materiality. So we formed a working group, which includes the school committee chair, the superintendent, myself, the town administrator, the chair of advisory, and a select board member. We've been meeting periodically. We did meet initially to decide a plan of action that we both parties agreed with. At that point, we engaged an architectural firm to perform a building assessment study, which included an expanded HVAC study to provide recommendations for cooling strategies. The report did recommend new systems be installed to provide adequate ventilation and humidity control, and we sort of bolded humidity control because right now our current air systems do not manage humidity at all. And as you all know, part of the heat issue is the humidity. Cooling options were also detailed. So you looked at both ways, and cooling wasn't necessarily the only recommendation that they made. So next slide. So with the report in hand and after meeting with the engineers, the working group has recommended, and the school committee approved, moving forward with three identified spaces which will incorporate AC, that being the auditorium, the cafeteria, and the library. And I will comment that the library is also a classroom wing, so there are classrooms that will benefit from us installing better air quality and cooling in the library. So upgrading these three spaces does begin to improve the overall comfort of the building on a typical day, but it also provides some relief to the building on the hot and humid days that occur, again, as we talked about at the beginning and the end of the school year. Estimated cost for these three units is approximately $400,000. School committee is allocating $100,000 from their building rental fund to offset the town's investment. And just for a little background, the building rental fund, the main revenue stream there is our after-school program, and they will also be one of the larger benefit groups to this because they are in our building from 2 until 6 after school gets out. And those are the primary spaces where those programs take place. So just another little bit of timeline. Given the current lead time for HVAC equipment, we will begin the design and bid work in fiscal year '25, but the actual installation would be, we'd be looking at the summer of '25, which would be fiscal year '26.
Thank you, Dawn. How did the select board vote on this article?
Select board voted five to zero in favor.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Sickle. Oh, sorry, Mr. Winters.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move favorable action and that the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, be authorized to borrow for the purposes of Pine Hill School HVAC improvements, item 8.1, as set forth in the advisory committee report table, including all incidental and related expenses, the sum of $300,000 pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a proposition two and a half, so-called debt exclusion question pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Subsection K.
Second.
I just want to point out that this is a two-thirds vote, and I'm opening the floor now for debate. Mr. Kingsley?
Analysis of the operating cost of this system?
Dawn?
So we are replacing existing systems that already use power. So we are not anticipating it. What we don't know is how much AC will use, but I will say that we installed air conditioning in Chicaring back in 2017, and we did not see a huge increase in our electricity bill.
Richard?
Richard Robinson, 117 Mills Street. I'm glad to see this, and I'll be voting for it. I will say I'm extremely disappointed that it doesn't include the classrooms every day that there is unbearable heat in a classroom. This town is wasting its money. It's wasting its money trying to hold school where children can't learn. This proposal is the smallest start, and we should be prepared, we should be urging the schools to air condition all of the classrooms so that we can stop wasting money while we try to educate our children.
Are you heading for a microphone?
Frank Orlando, Woodland Street. Clarification. I saw in the presentation that it wasn't going to get installed until '26, so the budget suggests you're going to spend it in '25. Can somebody talk to that?
Dawn?
So we do need approval of the funding to be able to proceed. Most likely, the money will be borrowed by the town in '25 because we will have to have started making payments on the equipment when we sign the contract, which would be in fiscal year '25. We made the point of saying the summer because that's when actually the school will be available for the installation.
There any other comments, questions? Peter?
Peter Black, 55 Maple Street. Not really a comment, it's a question. Has any consideration been given about the energy source for the HVAC? Is this electricity, or have we done anything to look into creating less carbon, you know, more solar, geothermal, whatever? Or is this just plain electricity?
Dawn?
So it is full electricity, and I would call on, I know Michael Lesser, they had looked, had a grant to look at geothermal options at Pine Hill, and it was not a viable option, if I'm correct. Know that anytime we look at this, the next project that would be coming up would be the Pine Hill roof, and that's when we could potentially look at solar panels that would help offset some of that. So we have to take this in pieces, and just to Mr. Robinson's comment. So our report did actually give us recommendations for the classrooms, and in the next couple of years, you're probably going to see us coming forward with more capital requests, but we're taking baby steps until we figure out exactly Pine Hill and what we're doing with that building so that everything we do makes sense. But that is on the agenda, and that was part of the study that the engineers did for us.
Thank you, Dawn. Anyone else? Any other comments or debate? Okay, the article has been moved and seconded. Remember that this is a two-thirds vote to pass. Please vote now. 174 to 17, the article passes by two-thirds. If you could just put the percentage up there in case anyone doubts. Okay, 91%. Thank you. All right, if we can move to slide 27. We have a number of presentations on the rest of the capital borrowing articles. We'll begin with Jeremy Marsette. Whoops. No, you can put that. Oh, sorry.
This next request is for the capital, this next capital request is for the replacement of vehicle 23, which is a dump truck with sander and plow. This vehicle is used regularly for roadwork and is a primary sander and plow used for winter snow removal operations. The vehicle is over 20 years old, and it's beyond its useful life. The pictures on this slide, I hope, help show the condition. Actually, it was kind of difficult to choose only a handful of pictures because there were so many pictures. This vehicle is in rough shape. The bottom-left picture is a picture of the frame rails, rotted and corroded. Those are really the structural pieces of the vehicle. The bottom-right picture is a picture of the underbody of the dump body and materials conveyor, again, showing the significant rot and corrosion in the vehicle. And this request for $350,000 would replace this important vehicle.
How did the select board vote on this?
Select board voted five to zero in favor.
Okay. So this is, if you could put slide 27 back up again? Okay. So this is for the dump truck, Snowfighter. We've been moved and seconded. I would remind you that this is also a two-thirds vote.
Mary, it wasn't moved yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Please, move.
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
Carried away there.
I move favorable action that the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, be authorized to borrow for the purposes of purchasing a dump truck, Snowfighter, item 8.2, as set forth in the advisory committee report table, including all incidental and related expenses, the sum of $350,000 pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a proposition two and a half, so-called debt exclusion question pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Subsection K.
Second.
The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate, comment, questions? All right, hearing none. Then if you want to put up slide 28, and we're ready to go on the vote here, please vote now, two-thirds. Okay, motion passes 164 to 29. I believe that is also 66 and two-thirds. Eighty-five. Okay. Article 8, exempt borrowing, item 3, roadway management for the Department of Public Works. Mr. Marsette?
This capital request is the annual supplement towards the town roadway resurfacing and reconstruction. A consultant assessment completed in 2021 performed a condition inventory of the town's roadways. Overall, the town's roadways were given a rating of 2.5 out of 5. That was considered to be fair, in fair condition. The assessment set an annual target investment of $500,000 to maintain and modestly increase the condition of the town's roadways. The capital request is for $250,000, which combined with funding received annually from the Commonwealth will meet the roadway funding target.
And how did the select board vote on this?
Select board voted five to zero in favor.
Mr. Sickle?
I move favorable action and that the treasurer, with the approval of the select board, be authorized to borrow for the purpose of improving town roadways, item 8.3, as set forth in the advisory committee report table, including all incidental and related expenses, the sum of $250,000 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority, and issue bonds or notes of the town, therefore, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters of an election, at an election of a proposition two and a half, so-called debt exclusion question pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), Subsection K.
Second.
Is there any comment, debate, question, and can we have slide 30 up? Actually, let's put, no, you're fine. Let's put 29 up first. Let's put 29 up first while people are talking. Great, thanks.
Dan Wolfe, Two Lakes Street. I'm curious to know whether any of this funding is going to be going to repairing the poor condition of the sidewalk that's going along North Main Street into town. I understand, thank you, that there may be a long-term project going on, but it gets, continues to deteriorate. A lot of us walk on it daily. There's certainly a lot of trip hazards that could cause the town a lot more money than what it may be, at least to spend some money to fix the holes in it. Thank you.
Does anyone else have anything to say? Sean, are you coming to speak? Or are you just walking down the stairs? Anyone else? Okay, the article has been moved.
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Does someone have an answer?
Sean?
Go ahead, Sean, sorry.
Sean Colain, 1 Butler Street, DPW Director. None of that money is specifically slated for the sidewalks in downtown. There is a longer-term project that, that may address that. There's also budget money every year that's in the omnibus budget for addressing certain sidewalk repairs. Hopefully, that answers. Yeah, thank you.
Any other comment, debate? Okay. So, now, you've moved it, right? You have moved it?
Yeah.
Okay. We're all set for voting here? Okay, two-thirds. Excluded debt, please vote now. Article 8, item 4, stormwater compliance.
The town's stormwater drainage system and its discharge are regulated under a permit issued by the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. This permit requires annual actions to maintain compliance. Last year, the town was required to develop a phosphorus control plan outlining steps to be taken to reduce the amount of phosphorus in our stormwater runoff. The phosphorus control plan was developed with assistance from our engineering consultant and was publicly vetted at meetings with the select board. The plan includes operational requirements like street sweeping and regular cleaning of pipes and basin. However, the plan also includes the construction of additional stormwater treatment. The requested funds will help ensure permit compliance and will fund the first phase of construction of the required stormwater treatment.
How did the select board vote on this?
Select board voted five to zero in favor.
Okay. Can we have, switch down front here and put up slide 31?
Mary, I still need to move.
I know you do.
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Winters.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move favorable action and that the treasurer with the approval of the select board be authorized to borrow for the purposes of stormwater engineering, consulting, and planning costs, item 8.4, as set forth in the advisory committee report table, including all incidental and related expenses, the sum of $150,000 pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1.
Mike, please.
I can't hear you.
Is this better?
Bring it closer. You got to get right up there.
Is that better?
Yes.
All right. I'll start over. No? I assumed it was bad throughout, but.
Where should I start? I just pick up where you were.
Oh, sorry. Sustained. Pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a proposition two and a half, so-called debt exclusion question pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), subsection K.
Second.
And the select board? Did I already ask the select board how they voted on this?
Sorry, select board, five to zero in favor, sorry.
Okay, no, it's fine. I couldn't remember whether I did. Okay, so, the article has been moved and seconded. Is there any question or debate? All right, hearing and seeing none. We can get the voting slide up now? Okay, great. This is a two-thirds vote. Please vote now. And if we can flip the percentage. Thank you. Article 8, item 5, public water supply treatment for town campus, PFAS.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. The town owns and operates several public water supplies that serve town buildings. These public water supplies are regulated by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection. Mass. DEP administers national drinking water standards and the Commonwealth's own standards, which may be more stringent than the national standards. Currently, the Commonwealth has drinking water quality standards for polyfluorale alcohol substances, PFAS. These are the so-called forever chemicals. The town hall campus wells and the well-serving Fire Station 1 are currently out of compliance with the Commonwealth's standards for PFAS. For the town hall campus wells, Mass. DEP has required that the town implement an action plan that includes the addition of treatment for the removal of PFAS. Recently, the U.S. EPA issued the first-ever national drinking water standards for PFAS chemicals. This new national standard is, will be more stringent than the current state regulations. Over the next several years, the U.S. EPA will implement these regulations and standards. Under the new national standards, it's likely that the water supplies for Woodhaven Elder Housing and Leland Farms and the Pine Hill School will also now, would then also be non-compliant and require addition of treatment. This capital request is to fund the engineering design and permitting through Mass. DEP for PFAS treatment at these four drinking water sources.
Thank you. Can we swap down front here and get slide 33 up now? Great. Mr. Sickel.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move favorable action and that the treasurer with the approval of the select board be authorized to borrow for the purposes of planning for treatment of the town campus water supply for PFAS per and polyfluorinated substances or so-called forever chemicals, item 8.5, as set forth in the advisory committee report table, including all incidental and related expenses, the sum of $75,000 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a proposition two and a half, so-called debt exclusion question pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), subsection K.
Second.
And how did the select board vote on this?
Five to zero.
Okay.
In favor.
All right. The article has been moved and seconded. Are there any comments, questions, debate? Ms. Murchison.
Bob Murchison, Lake Street. I'm generally in favor of this article, but I do have a question. Why are we, as a town, paying to treat the water of Leland Farms, which is a privately-owned community?
Actually, this summer, the water supply systems for, for Leland Farms and for the Woodhaven will be combined into one system. There were some water quality issues for, for both of those systems and the consultant and engineering consultant that looked at it found it to be more efficient if we combine those two systems together with Leland Farms sharing their representative costs for the future operation of that. The combination of those two water supplies is funded by some state earmarks and other grant monies that were made available to the community.
And just to follow up, is there, has there been a vote or will there be a vote on combining these water supplies?
Don't believe any vote was, was required, but.
No, I didn't, actually, I'm having trouble hearing your question, Bob. Could you ask it again?
I was just asking if there has been or will be a vote on combining the water supplies. I'm just concerned that these are private homes and we're mixing what is a public housing option, Woodhaven, which is a great thing in our community, with another great thing, which is an affordable, partly affordable housing community, but it is, in fact, private. All of the homes at Leland Farms are privately owned and it's just not clear to me why we're mixing public and private without a fair amount of caution.
Sean?
Sean?
Sean, can you go first?
Sean Colain, DPW Director, again. Two years ago, we did actually vote at town meeting to combine those two systems. We approved a capital project to do so. The reason that's being done, the well for Leland, although it sounds like private, it's not, it's on Woodhaven's property. In fact, half of Leland Farms is on town property. It's a land lease, so they shouldn't have actually been two different public water supplies. So, it was at the request of DEP that we are combining that system into one public water supply.
Cory?
Hi, Cory, Lincoln 10, Great Rock Road, and I was formerly involved in Leland as the public representative on the Board of Trustees. And actually, I was going to say the same thing that Sean just said. The town owns the land on which the structures at Leland Farms are built and the town is responsible for maintaining the integrity of the resources of the land, including the water.
Is there any? Richard, sorry.
Richard Robinson, 117 Mill Street. A question I don't know the answer to and a comment I hope will not be flipped. What does it cost currently for the bottled water, for the bottled water supply that we're using? That's the question. And then the, the comment is, what's wrong with just continuing to do that? And I ask that out of ignorance, not out of some miserly idea.
Sure. As part of the non-compliance for the town hall campus wells, Mass. DEP required us to put together a formal action plan that required interim measures like providing bottled water, which is currently covered within the town facilities budget. I don't know the, the full cost of that. It's relatively modest. However, Mass. DEP does not consider bottled water as a permanent solution. They're requiring that we do a, a permanent treatment option for the wells. They, they won't approve continuing with bottled water indefinitely.
Is there any other comment, questions? Okay, this is a, if we can have 34 up there? This is a two-thirds vote. Please vote now. Motion passes, and if you can flip the percentages, please. Article 8, item 6, tennis pickleball courts and fencing, Jamison Field. We have a presentation by the Recreation Commission on the following items. Mr. Goldberg.
Dave Goldberg, I'm the Chair of the Recreation Commission. So, this proposal, our request, is to upgrade, resurface the tennis courts and upgrade the facilities there. The, the tennis facilities are somewhat unique in terms of the, from rec's perspective because it's one of the only facilities that actually is used year-round by all ages. If you go out there pretty much any time of year where there's not snow on the ground, you'll see somebody out there using either, either playing tennis or using the pickleball courts. It's also used by the high school as well as we, we give private lessons there on the, on the courts. If anyone's been down there recently, you'll notice that over the last few years, the tennis courts have gotten into a state of somewhat disrepair. There are some very large cracks, as well as the fact that the fence itself is curled up, providing or creating a safety hazard for people to get close to the nets. We've had people complain about potentially getting scratched or cut as they get close to the fences themselves, as well as the nets are in pretty poor shape as of now. One of the, one of the other issues that we've been sort of keeping on the back burner for a while now is the fact that the courts themselves are not ADA-compatible, so anyone who has a hard time getting up the hill there can't access the courts themselves. So, this is an opportunity to take advantage of redoing the, the courts to bring them into ADA compliance. So, we set out, we, we contracted with a architect that put the plan together. The goals for that particular, for the plan was to obviously provide safer experience for the people using the courts, include the ADA accessibility, and lastly, to leverage the fact that we've got the space where the backboard is, is currently located to put in some permanent pickleball courts. So, that's a nice picture of what pickleball looks like. Keep going. So, this is what the architects put together. You can see we will continue to have four full-time tennis courts. The last court, the one, the tennis court that you see there on the right would, would actually be a hybrid court. We could use that for pickleball as well. So, if you've been out there and you've seen people playing pickleball on the court all the way to the left, that's a hybrid court today. So, this gives us an opportunity to add essentially two new pickleball courts. You can see the, the permanent pickleball courts that are where the current backboard is, as well as, and it may not be clear in the, in the picture and certainly the people in the back, but there is a path, a permanent path for individuals to get from the parking lot to the pickleball courts and the tennis courts themselves. I think that's it.
Okay, thanks. Okay, Mr. Winters.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move favorable action and that the treasurer with the approval of the select board be authorized to borrow for the purposes of replacing four tennis courts and surrounding fencing at Jamison Fields, constructing two pickleball courts on the site of the current practice backboard, painting pickleball lines on one of the tennis courts, and erecting a new tennis backboard, item 8.6, as set forth in the advisory committee report table, including all incidental and related expenses, the sum of $499,000 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore, provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a proposition two and a half, so-called debt exclusion question pursuant to Mass. General Laws, Chapter 59, Section 21(c), subsection K.
Second.
How did the select board vote on this?
We voted five to zero in favor.
All right, the article's been moved and seconded. Is there any question or debate? Mr. Kingsley.
Thank you. I'm an avid tennis player. I played on these courts last week. I completely disagree that they need to be resurfaced or that we need two new pickleball courts. I think this is a colossal waste of a half a million dollars. There are four tennis courts. Anyone who plays tennis or pickleball knows that you can put two pickleball courts on each tennis court. We could have eight pickleball courts on the existing courts without building We could have eight pickleball courts on the existing courts without building new ones. So the new pickleball courts are absolutely unnecessary. I don't, I noticed in the warrant that there's a suggestion that this would only add $25 to the typical real estate tax bill, but it would be over 20 years. It's 1.5% of the entire town budget this year. It's about $280 for the average homeowner. I guess one of my several questions is, have we done any analysis of the actual usage of the court? And then how do we determine, other than the three pictures you showed, that the courts are somehow not in playable condition?
Yeah, so this is, the courts right now are still playable. If you go out there, you'll notice people playing on them today. The issue is that these cracks are getting bigger and bigger. And the issues around the fencing aren't going away either. So the proposal is to get in front of the, a potential bigger project later on down the line, where we have to close the courts and potentially not have them usable for some period of time.
So can we spend less than a half a million dollars on fixing the fence and sealing a few cracks in the, or maybe replacing a net?
Yeah, so we've had consultants out to look at whether or not, we have been actually resurfacing the courts over the past, I should say, over the lifetime of the, of the courts. That was done around eight or nine years ago. At this point, resurfacing isn't an option. The issues go deeper than just resurfacing the court.
Do you acknowledge that we can put eight pickleball courts on the existing courts?
That's, yeah, sure. That's what we do today. But we also have to, the backboard is in disrepair as well, if you notice.
So why do we need two unique standalone pickleball courts if we can add eight courts to the existing courts?
If you go down there when it's sunny, you'll notice that the courts are completely taken. And the pickleball is becoming more and more popular. And we've actually had issues where people have waited, or we've had, you know, capacity issues over the past couple of years. So this is an opportunity...
Is that anecdotal, or have you done an analysis of how many people are actually using the court?
We don't currently keep track of the usage, the specific uses of the court, hour by hour.
Thank you.
Mr. Wolf.
Thank you. So I kind of tend to agree that $499,000 is a lot of money. I'm sorry, I tend to agree, $499,000 is a lot of money for what I perceive to be relatively few people, if you take the total of town, who use the facilities. And I would like to say also that, you know, I understand it, and I think there could be modifications done to maybe spend a lot less money doing this. The other thing is, it says that the courts are rented out for lessons and summer camps, and the town could be at risk of losing this money. How much money are we talking about?
I don't have an exact figure. Dave, do you have a sense? I don't have the number at hand.
I mean, I would guess it's relatively minor compared to $499,000 that we would spend. And I would recommend that we go back again and take a look at how we can modify this. And yeah, you know what? People might have to wait. And that's just the way it is. I mean, if you're at a big tennis club, sometimes you have to wait. And I think that we really need to take another look at this. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay. The article has been moved and seconded. And I think, have I asked the Select Board? You can tell me again. How did the Select Board vote on this?
Select Board voted five to zero in favor.
Okay. So this is a two-thirds vote. Please vote now. Can you give me the percentage on that? All right, motion fails. We can come back down here to Article...
Can I get the count again? Is that how the number is? Thank you.
Jackie, you got your number? Okay, yeah. Article 8, Item 7, Jamison Field renovation. Dave?
So we, we've been working on improving the baseball fields. Recreation started about two years ago on Jamison 3, which is the, the field at the far, the very end of Pine Hill Lane. We converted that into a softball court. We paid for that out of our own revolving fund. We also, if you've been down to the tennis courts, you'll see that Jamison 1 has also been renovated. We paid for that, again, out of revolving funds and with a gift from Dover Sherburne Youth Baseball and Softball. So in continuing in upgrading the fields, the request is for $100,000 to upgrade Jamison 4. So this is the only full-size baseball field between the two towns. It's used not only by our youth sports, but also by club teams. And it hasn't been repaired in quite some time. As of now, if you go out there, you'll notice that the infield is fairly uneven. You'll notice that the baselines are, there's very, there's large lips at the baselines, which create safety issues. Balls kick up. Same thing around the pitcher's mound. You can see here again, fencing, which is curled up, hasn't been replaced in, I don't even know how long. So the idea is, the money will be used to correct the issues that I just outlined. Yeah, I think that's pretty, pretty clear. Is that it? I think that's the last slide. Yeah. Should hopefully give you a sense for what we're going to use the money for.
Okay. Mr. Sickel. And if we can have Slide 37 up. Great, thanks.
So Advisory did not support this, did not support this proposal, and so I move no action.
All right. Is there questions or debate on this? Comments, questions, debate? Okay. How did the Select Board vote on this?
Select Board was five to zero in favor.
Okay.
Do you want to specify in favor of the project, not in support of? Advisory's no action.
Yeah, I guess I'd need to clarify. We were five to zero in favor of the project, not in favor of the no action motion by Advisory.
Okay. Okay, so, well, is somebody coming to speak? Sure.
Good evening. Peter Moore, 45, Old Orchard Road. I'm also Chair of the Capital Budget Committee, which did vote in favor of this project as well. I have a question for the Advisory Board. I know you guys can't take a vote today, but I was present for the public hearing, and I thought that one of the reasons why there was no favorable action on this recreation project was because of the other recreation project had been supported. And so if the town just voted down on one recreation project, I guess it seems that perhaps this project would then be supported. And I don't know if Advisory Board can ever speak to that, because it's not a, there's no vote or anything by the Advisory Board. But I don't know if there's anything that could be shared along those lines. And I'm happy to explain why the capital budget did vote in favor of this.
Dan?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Thanks for that, Peter. I think that's not the characterization of how Advisory thought about this. I think the consideration was whether this is a project that needs to be done now, or it's a project that could be done later. And after some discussions with a number of people, including folks from the REC Commission, the sense was that waiting a year or waiting on this delaying the renovation would not cause any significant safety issues. And so given that, it didn't seem that it was imperative that this proceed this year. And so Advisory's recommendation was no action, and this is something that could be considered in the future at a time when it may be more pressing and urgent.
Thank you. Peter, did you want to add anything?
Just in general, this project, in view of all the other capital budget expenses, including the tennis pickleball court, in terms of trying to, there are a lot of capital requests coming down the road in the future. And sort of delaying certain projects to a future time period is going to just stack up a lot of the capital expenses that Mr. Marsett had outlined in the plan, the five, six-year plan. So things like the tennis pickleball court, when it was first proposed to the Capital Budget Committee, was actually larger. And Recreation did go back, reassess, and actually decrease and adjust what the project was. And so I just, the concern to the town is that there are a lot of capital projects that are coming due that will be hitting pretty soon, schools, et cetera. And so delaying things will not necessarily save the town. Generally, I view that, you know, a penny saved is a penny earned, but we're going to have to spend these pennies at some point. And so that, I just think that the town needs to take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Yes, Mr. Kingsley.
I appreciate that last comment, but it also gives us an opportunity to weigh and compare and contrast all these expenditures, because we can't do everything. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
Hi, Michael Mahoney, 56 Greenwood. Just as someone who is a youth sports coach in town here, I can only speak from that perspective and certainly can't provide the same perspective that Peter has in terms of the capital budget. But we continue, as a town, to vote down support of our recreational facilities. And it's striking, as someone who visits neighboring towns, times towns that do not have the same budgets that we do, we're failing in comparison. And, you know, I think just so far this year, even our neighbors in Dover have had town, fields that have been open where ours have been closed. And again, there's certain things we can't control. But I think we need to think about the kids in town and youth sports and the usage of our fields, and that we are falling behind. And I think those, you know, whether we're talking about baseball fields or, you know, what came up a couple of years ago in terms of a turf field at Laurel, which failed, those things are costing our kids. And I just would encourage us to not think about these things as just a single project. But ultimately, what we stand for as a town, which I think is a place that ultimately has identified as a place where families want to come because of the strength of our schools and the strength of the community. And I would strongly, I'm strongly in favor of us continuing to invest in the infrastructure in the town to support youth sports. Thanks.
Is there any further comment? Have I asked the Select Board?
What'd you say?
Have I asked the Select Board on this?
You did ask before, I think, but we voted five to zero in favor of this.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, I need to make an explanation on this so that everyone understands. We've been voting a lot of two-thirds because it has involved borrowing. This will be a majority vote, and it is a vote on a negative motion. Advisory has moved no action. If you are in favor of no action, you want to vote yes. If you are not in favor of no action, you want to vote no. Can we get the slide up there? Please vote now. Is there anyone wishing to make an alternate motion or anything like that? All right, nope. Okay, we'll move on then.
Madam Moderator.
Yes?
I moved that the town appropriate funds to be exempt from Chapter 2 and 1/2, whatever appropriate language is supposed to be.
And the amount?
For $100,000 in improvements to Jamison Field had set forth in our background materials.
All right. And can you give that to the clerk in writing?
All right. Someone get something? Yeah, do you mind writing that down? Thank you. It's coming. I have a ghostwriter.
Okay. That's great.
Meanwhile, I'll second the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
And we will put a, on the fly slide up here for that.
Can you ask them to bring the, an amendment down?
It's an alternate motion. It's not an amendment.
Okay, well, I just thought, okay. I thought you could do an amendment.
Oh, you want him to leave the table, Jackie? Okay.
No.
Okay.
I don't, I need the motion.
Right.
In writing, but I can give him a regular piece of paper?
Okay.
It doesn't matter.
Okay. All right. And, subject to Prop. 2 and 1/2. Debt exclusion. Yes, it is borrowing. It's a borrowing, not appropriation.
And it's exempt borrowing.
An exempt borrowing.
Sure.
And it will require a two-thirds vote. Great. Is that, is that enough, or do they need the real... Town Council suggests the wording be, for field repair, contingent on Prop. 2 and 1/2, debt exclusion.
We almost have the language completed here, though, if you wanted to do that, Madam Moderator, and we could give the handwritten version to the...
To the clerk?
Well, to the clerk, but then also the... Well, to the clerk, but then also the, it can be typed on the screen if you want to do it that way.
Okay. Probably for what we're voting on, I think this is sufficient.
Is that all right, Paul?
For the, for the actual...
Let's make sure it matches.
Okay, let's just make sure that it matches.
Do you want, do you want to use what she's got on this?
I'm going to ask Town Council to look at it before it's...
Okay, that's fine. He's almost got it finished, so I think we should have her look at this version and just decide.
Yes, that's what, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question while we're waiting, or are we going to do that after?
Sure, what kind of question is?
Darrell Beardsley, 54 Forest Street. So, I have no objection to improving the field. Certainly, the lip along the edge of the diamond does look like it could be a safety issue. Can someone explain why it's so expensive? It just seems for leveling and some fence repair. I'd just be curious to know how the monies get assigned to the repairs.
Dave?
So, we just finished J1, and that was about $50,000 to the same people that came out. And that's based off multiple quotes and trying to find people who do this in the area. J1 is a smaller, the baseball fields, J4 is a full-size field, so it scales up, unfortunately. Actually, the field is more than twice as big. You get some economies of scale, but it's much a larger area to be worked on. So, again, after going to multiple, you know, multiple sources, that's essentially what it's going to cost. So, I hope that helps.
Okay, so, who is making, is that, who's making the actual motion?
I can make the motion, I'll need that back to read it.
Okay.
I move favorable action in that the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, be authorized to borrow, Paul, handwriting is awful, for the proposed renovations of Jameson Field to the sum of $100,000 pursuant to MGL 40, 44, 70D.
Section 7, 1.
7, 1.
Section 7, 1.
Do you want me to make the motion?
Nearby enabling.
Let me read it.
That is terrible. But thank you for writing it.
I'm really Eric Johnson making this motion.
Yeah, that's fine.
Move favorable action and that the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, be authorized to borrow for the purposes of renovation of Jameson Field Four, the sum of $100,000 pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 44, Section 7, 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town therefore. Provided, however, this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a Proposition Two and a Half, so-called debt exclusion question pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 21, C, K. Was that your motion, Eric?
Thank you, Paul, and thank you for writing that.
And I second it.
Could we have someone second it who didn't read it?
I'll second it.
Okay.
And I will say, if I can, Madam Moderator, Eric Johnson, 27 St., that I support this, particularly with the, I think comments are made about spreading out the capital appropriations. We saw it before, I did think $100,000 was reasonable within it. And there was a little concern with also the pickleball courts, but now that that's off the table, I do encourage the citizens to support this article.
Paul?
I'd like to also speak in favor of this on the basis of how important recreation is to all of us at different ages in our life. But it's very important for children, for youngsters, as part of learning the values of team effort, the values of competitiveness, and learning all kinds of life skills. They should be able to do it on safe facilities and not run the risk and not have parents worry about the risk of people getting injured. This is a great community. We ought to have safe and good recreation facilities for our children and for all of us. So, I would urge you to support this.
Are there, so, okay, we've had a motion on, an alternative motion, it has been seconded. Are there any comments on this motion? All right, just to explain, even though the previous motion was a majority, was a majority vote, this now involves excluded debt borrowing. So, this will be a two-thirds vote. Please vote now.
Can I, can I make a comment?
Yes.
Catherine Olson, 54, Ivy Lane. I have lived in town for several years and kids involved in a lot of sports. I have a son who plays very active baseball. And I would say this field is an absolute mess. And it's, and he don't like playing there, and he's, and he has played there on several occasions, which you worry about it. But in general, a great field like that will also attract other teams to play, because this is the level where you play and you invite other teams to come into town, which actually has benefits to the rest of the town, places like CNL Frosty or now the Fireside Tavern, where people who actually come in and play, and play baseball in the evening and then have a place to go and enjoy the rest of the town. So, I think it has more benefits than just our kids playing on a safe field and a good field that they feel proud to, for other people from other towns to come to, but also the benefits to other, the other businesses within our town because people coming in to visit.
Anyone else? Yes.
I'm now confused. Does this mean that these fields are available for anybody from any town to come and play?
Dave? Dave Goldberg?
No, they're not open for anyone to come play. Sorry, no, they're not open for anyone to come play. The towns-in-team do play teams from, like, the DS teams do play teams from other towns. So, there are people that are coming into town to play on our fields because we're hosting them.
Sarah, are you speaking?
Yes, Sarah Raggy, 39 Green Lane, and I'd like to ask to move the question.
All right. So, that is a two-thirds vote to move the question. Yeah, if you can throw a slide up, move the question. All right, please vote now, I'm moving the question. I can even see that. All right, so we now go to the voting on the question itself. And remember, this is now involved, now involving excluded borrowing, and so it is no longer a majority vote, it is a two-thirds vote. Please vote now. Looks good to me. Yes, okay. Motion passes. Article Eight, Item Eight, Sherburne Historical Items Display and Preservation Space Design. We have a presentation by George Fisk.
Can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Thank you. It's George Fisk, I live at 27 Hollis Street, but I'm speaking this evening as president of the Historical Society. The Sherburne Historical Society has been a part of Sherburne's cultural backbone since its incorporation in 1913, when William Bradford Homer-Douse donated land and a building to the town to create a public library and to provide a home for the collection and activities of the Sherburne Historical Society. Since then, the society has served the town and its citizens by providing access to research materials, conducting local history programs in the schools, organizing tours, and especially by preserving and displaying the artifacts and documents from which our history is written. Because of the COVID epidemic and the need to spread out the work area for public officials in the town offices, we were moved out of our home and into storage. We've been in storage since June of 2020. The plan was to have us eventually move into refurbished space in the current town library. Working with town officials, representatives of the library board, and the Historical Society, a plan was conceived through a relocation study completed late last summer. Our new home will be in the currently unfinished basement area of the 1971 library structure donated by the Salt and Stall family. In February, at our annual meeting of the Historical Society, and with the plan for move into the unfinished space, our organization voted to change our name to the Sherburne History Center and Museum. Combined with the library's resources, our new home would be the go-to location for all things related to Sherburne's history. In this 350th anniversary year of the Sherburne Historical Society, has co-hosted a series of lectures successfully utilizing the community room in our new library additions. The response to these programs, all representing various aspects of our past, has been overwhelmingly positive. Our attendance levels have far exceeded our expectations, the apparent synergies with the library programming has been nothing short of extraordinary. We have developed a wonderful working relationship with the library staff and they with us. The Select Board is requesting funds to be provided through Article Eight to hire an architectural firm to develop definitive plans for our new space as delineated in the relocation, the relocation study. As you can see, this area, approximating 1,800 square feet, is divided into three sections: a curator's office, archive storage, and the larger space is for exhibits and research. In this 350th anniversary year, we believe it is only fitting that the town continue its longstanding commitment of providing a home to the Sherburne History Center and Museum, which is accessible and inviting. I urge your support for this article. Thank you.
Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move favorable action and that the treasurer, with the approval of the Select Board, be authorized to borrow for the purposes of obtaining architectural plans with sufficient detail to go out to bid for designing the Sherburne Historical Items Display and Preservation Space in the unfinished area in the lower level of the library. Item 8.8 is set forth in the Advisory Committee Report Table, including all incidental and related expenses, the sum of $100,000 pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7, Subsection 1, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds or notes of the town therefore. Provided, however, that this vote shall be expressly contingent upon approval by the voters at an election of a Proposition Two and a Half, so-called debt exclusion question, pursuant to Mass. General Law's Chapter 59, Section 21C, Subsection K. We also request that plans be solicited at various levels and price points.
Second. How did the Select Board vote on this?
Select Board voted five to zero in favor.
All right, the article has been moved and seconded, let's open debate. Are there any questions, comments, Mr. Kingsley?
Yes, I'm reading the minority report in the warrant. If I'm reading this right, we spent $13,000 on an initial design plan in order to get a detailed estimate of the complete construction costs of the project. And that came in at $922,000. Has that been approved? Or is that some future discussion we're going to have at town meeting?
Mr. Sickle?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. So, that has not been approved. That was a conceptual design plan, and it did have a number attached to it, but that number didn't have any force, just a conceptual design plan, not a plan that would be sufficient to go out to bid. And so, the proposal here is to engage an architect to develop plans that could go out to bid. So, the $922,000 is a number that's out there, but it's not particularly relevant for the current proposal, because that's not what is being proposed. What's being proposed is to fund an architectural study to get plans at, to a level of detail that they could be put out to bid. And I'd also note the last sentence in the, in the motion, which is that advisory requested that, that effort to put out architectural plans be done in a way that could elicit different price points and different options for how to proceed with the full project.
So, in plain English, last year, the $13,000 was spent for sort of a, I'm going to say, a back-of-the-envelope estimate of $922,000? I mean, is that the way to think about it? And that the $100,000 is going to be a full set of design plans?
Yeah, that's right. I mean, it was a little more than what would fit on a small envelope, but yeah, it was a conceptual design plan rather than detailed specs that one would need to put a project out to bid.
So, we're going to borrow $100,000 to go get plans that will then be put out to bid, which may come in at, nobody knows, a million, two million, nobody knows?
That, the proposal is $100,000 for plans, and as I mentioned, the motion included a request that those plans be done in a way that they would bring in, bring in alternative, alternative versions and at different price points. So, call it, you know, a basic version, a medium version, and a, you know, maybe a fancier version.
And have numbers been put around that?
There had been no numbers put around that.
So, the $100,000 is not, they're not going to be instructed to say, give us a $300,000 version, a $600,000 version, and a million dollar version?
Those numbers have not been specified.
So, we're going to spend $100,000 that we don't know what they're going to come up with?
We're going to spend $100,000 to get a set of plans that could be put out to bid, because without that specificity, it's hard to know.
Okay, I would strongly suggest that we not spend $100,000 on a project that we have no idea what it's going to cost. That seems like a colossal waste of money.
All right, down here in front.
Yes, Madam Moderator, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much. My name's Doug Brown, 92 Bullard Street, and I rise to enthusiastically urge the town to support this. And I'll be brief, but I just want to share a few personal observations if I could. You know, I've been increasingly distressed, as so many of you have, by the attack both in the country and around the world at some of our basic democratic liberal values that this country was founded upon. We all have our ways of responding to that. Mine has been to immerse myself more deeply in the history of our nation and its principles and in our community. I've chosen to do that by writing and speaking as much as I can about it. I've written several articles for our local newspaper. I had the privilege of speaking at the 350th on the local indigenous history. And what I've learned about that is just a few things. First, Sherburne has an incredibly rich history. Shame on me for not knowing that beforehand, but I am determined to share that with everyone, virtually every major player in the history of...
Virtually every major player in the history of our Commonwealth and our country have touched or gone through our town, and it's an incredibly rich history. I'll also say that we have an amazing group of individuals who has stewarded the history of this town and the society. I risk mentioning any for leaving several out, but I have to just mention Betsy Johnson, who's here, a town historian, who has worked, you know, thousands of hours to help the town understand and become more aware of its history. I mentioned Kevin Delaney, a high school history teacher in Wayland, who has come back to our town and devoting now his time and efforts to do it. And of course, George Fisk, who is chairing not only our current 350th, but did the 325th, and his father did the 300th.
If you could wrap up.
Thank you. I think this is a wise investment. These are the most frugal stewards of town resources that I know, and I'll tell you, anything that isn't used for the fit-out will be put toward the ultimate selection. There will be specific plans. It will not be wasted money. This stuff is done all the time, and I urge support. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yes, Jeff Waldron, 8 Surry Lane, speaking as a resident. Jeff Waldron, 8 Surry Lane, speaking as a resident rather than a Select Board member. I strongly support this initiative. A couple of points I want to reiterate what George said. First of all, the town is committed to have the historical museum on display to the public as a condition of the original Douse Library donation, so it's not a factor of doing it or not doing it. We're required to do some sort of display and some sort of preservation of the town historical documents. The second thing is, as he pointed out, they actually had space in Town Hall. They vacated it so we could accommodate COVID and spread employees out in town buildings. So the reason they have a need is because they rose to the occasion to address the COVID issue. And my final point is, with respect to getting a more detailed design, you can't get grants unless you have a shovel-ready project. So if we do have a detailed design, that's the reason why we're doing this, is because then we can apply for grants to help fund the eventual construction of the project. Thank you.
Rick?
Rick Novak, 36 Nathan Hill Road, also known as George Fisk's fourth great-grandfather's house. I strongly am in favor of this amount, you know, whether we are legally obligated to do so or not, I think we are surely morally obligated to do so, that our current very expensive and lovely library sits on a grant from this man, and we ought to honor his wishes. I think there's nothing wrong with being a town where we question expenses and try to get the best bang for our buck, and there's nothing wrong with being a town where we try to have good ball, safe ball fields for our kids. But we should also keep our commitments, and there's no reason why we cannot do all three.
Adam?
Adam Page, 3 Pecum Hill Road. Will the design consume all of the extra space in the basement, or will there be any remaining? Are there constraints put around the design so that if the library wanted to put in a maker space or use some space for other purposes, there would be a remainder?
Can someone address that? Okay.
Brian Conley, 9 Thorbred Lane. I'm also chair of the library trustees and didn't come up here to answer that question, but I will answer it because I do know the answer, Adam. We've worked closely with the Historical Society in looking at that space in the basement, identifying about 1,700 square feet, and maintaining space for some of the other activities that are being held in the basement. It's mainly cleaning out storage to create an opening in that area. So the trustees looked at that pretty closely during COVID and voted to approve the allocation of that space. And we're working very closely with the Historical Center and others who have been working on the project to make sure that the library's interests are compatible with what the Historical Center's interests are.
And now you have a comment.
Well, I covered most of it in that answer to the question, but I would say that the collaboration between the library director, the library trustees, and the Historical Center has grown very strong over the efforts we've had on this, and I'm very optimistic that it'll be a good outcome.
Okay, thank you. Is there any, are there any more comments, questions?
Over here.
Yes, Paul?
I want to speak in favor of this. Sherburne has a tremendous history. We're celebrating our 350th anniversary. When you look at the history of our nation, it's made up of components, history that took place in all these different places. Well, here's Massachusetts, one of the original colonies. We go way back to the 1600s, and we have all these artifacts and all these things that we've accumulated. This is an asset, not just of the town, but of the Commonwealth and of the nation. It's something that needs to be, something that we should all be very proud of. And to hide it someplace where it's in storage is a complete waste. It should be on display for all of us to see that we're part of a continuum that's gone on from the 1600s to the present time. Yes, there may be a further project, but we have asked the, our congressman, to ask the Congress of the United States to provide some earmark funds for the actual project, because again, this is a national asset in addition to being a state asset. But in order to get there, we have to have something to work with. So this is the seed money that would get us to the point of figuring out what we need and where we're going. And if we have that, then we do have the congressional office willing to help us to see if the United States would further support its own history, which Sherburne has contributed so much to. Please support this.
Sarah?
Sarah Raggy, 39 Green Lane. I would just say, when you walk into our town offices, you see displays that the Sherburne Historical Society has put on for us to get a taste or flavor of what the community is that we enjoy living in. And I would also remark that every month that goes by, we're paying Gentle Giant substantial storage fees, so keep that in mind when you're voting.
Any other comments or questions? Mr. Kingsley?
Just building on the last couple of comments, if we're talking about 1,700 square feet in the basement and something like a million dollars, which was the first estimate, you're talking about nearly $600 a square foot. You could build a spectacular house for $600 a square foot. As far as the rotation of items through the Town Hall, most museums, if you go to the Decore de Vos or any museum around here, most of what they have is in storage, and they just rotate it out. I would suggest a much more cost-effective alternative to having a purpose-built museum would be to simply rotate all of these artifacts through the Town Hall over time. Thank you.
Yes.
John Hyde, 23 Mill Street. For a project like this, four to 500 bucks a square foot is pretty standard, and design costs are typically at 10 to 15. Sorry, for a project like this, four to 500 bucks a square foot is pretty much right in line with where it should be for a commercial project. And design costs for this would typically be around 10 to 15% of the project cost, so 100 grand seems perfectly in line with what you would ordinarily pay for a project like this. Museum-quality project, commercial construction is different from residential.
Betsy?
Betsy Johnson, 272 Western Avenue. Just to answer Mr. Kingsley's question about rotating, we cannot get at the things that are in storage. We do not know exactly where they are. We've been able to pull a few things back in the way of paper items and a few books, but most of our collection has been beyond our control since 2020.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay. The article has been moved, seconded, and it requires a two-thirds vote. All right, please vote now. Motion passes. Okay, if we can pull up Slide 41 now. All right. The next set of line items for Article Eight are those that will be paid for with free So free cash articles one through five will be considered as a consent agenda. As free cash transfers, each requires a simple majority vote. To help you decide whether you want to place a hold on any of these line items, we'll now have a presentation on them by Town Administrator Jeremy Marsette.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. There are five free cash-funded capital items, including continuing the regular replacement schedule for police vehicles by replacing a 2017 police interceptor SUV with a fuel-efficient sedan. The next item is a purchase of 12 sets of fire turnout gear. These are the personal safety gear firefighters wear to protect themselves from heat and flames. These additional sets of turnout gear will help keep firefighters in service while their existing gear is cleaned following an incident. Currently, if a firefighter's gear is contaminated, they must be placed out of service and are unavailable to assist with emergency incidents until their gear is cleaned. Related, we're finding that electric battery fires from electric vehicles and home batteries are particularly dirty and severely contaminate firefighters' turnout gear. The next item proposed is funding for the construction of traffic calming measures on Western Avenue, including splitter islands and speed feenback signage. These measures will control speed and increase roadway safety. The next item is for the funding and installation of an expanded security camera network for the Town Hall campus in areas around Town Hall and the library. Recent security assessments of town buildings identified the need for the expansion of the security system. And finally, the last request is to find, to fund the completion of the Farm Pond watershed-based plan. A Mass. DEP-approved watershed-based plan is required for the town to become eligible for state grants and funding to help protect and improve the water quality of Farm Pond. A $50,000 state earmark has helped begin and advance the work necessary to develop the plan. However, additional funding is required for the consultant to complete the plan.
How did the Select Board vote on these items?
Five to zero in favor.
Of all of them?
Yes, yes, Madam Moderator.
Okay, thank you. All right. I will now read the line item number, title, and amount to be transferred from free cash for each item. If you wish to consider a line item separately, please call a hold, and please make it loud, don't just, I need to hear you, when I read the information on that line item. And I'll remove it from the consent agenda, and we'll address it separately after all unheld items in the consent agenda are voted. Item number one, Police Department, Police Vehicle, $55,250. Line two, Fire Department, Fire, Turnout Gear, $59,412. Line three, DPW, Western Avenue Traffic Calming Design and Construction, $75,000. Item four, Select Board, Town Campus Security Improvements, $50,000. Item five, Select Board, Farm Pond Watershed Plan, $32,000. All right, no holds have been called, so I will ask for a motion on this. Mr. Sickle?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. To make it official, this will be a little repetitive, but I move favorable action and that for the following items and sums. Number one, Police Department, Police Vehicle, $55,250. Number two, Fire Department, Fire Turnout Gear, $59,412. Department of Public Works, number three, Western Avenue Traffic Calming Design and Construction, $75,000. Number four, Select Board, Town Campus Security Improvements, $50,000. And number five, Select Board, Farm Pond Watershed Based Plan, $32,000, for a total of $271,662, all for the purposes as set forth in the Advisory Committee Report Table, including all incidental and related expenses, that the sum $271,662 be transferred from free cash in the treasury, set appropriation to be expended by June 30, 2027, with unexpended funds as of June 30, 2027, being returned to the general fund.
Second. The article has been moved and seconded. There is no debate on a consent agenda. This is majority vote. Motion passes. Article nine, substantial equipment, supplies, and service purchases. The following items have costs that are below the $25,000 threshold to qualify as capital items, but they are also not annual expenses that would fit naturally into the operating budget. Accordingly, the advisory motions will be for them to be financed with free cash, and they will be considered as a consent agenda. As free cash transfers, each requires a simple majority vote. Again, to help you decide whether you want to place a hold on any of these line items, we will now have a presentation by Town Administrator Jeremy Marsette.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. There are six one-time purchases that are below the threshold for capital but outside department operating budgets that are proposed. These include a request for the purchase of two specialized water nozzles and three specialized blankets for the control of electric vehicle fires. Electric vehicle battery fires are particularly hard to contain with traditional methods and expose firefighters to dangerous fumes. This new equipment will help contain these electric fires more rapidly and also mitigate exposure to our firefighters. The next item is a request for the purchase of three hydrant-assist valves and three Siamese valves for the Fire Department. These valves would ensure that all fire apparatus have a set of these valves. The valves are used to connect fire hoses to hydrants and equipment and are particularly important for the long hose runs commonly deployed to fight fires in Sherburne. The next item is funding to replace several key computer servers and other equipment that are well beyond their service life. Next item is for funding to replace town-based Wi-Fi equipment located at the Police Department, Fire Department, and the Public Works Facility, which are at the end of their service life. The replacement will increase network security and align all town Wi-Fi devices to the same protocols. The next item is funding to replace the audio/video switching equipment in the Town Hall Meeting Room, ensuring compatibility of the hybrid room equipment with broadcast capabilities of Dover Sherburne Community TV. And the last item is funding for the layout, copy editing, and printing of the town's open space recreation plan. The Open Space Committee has begun updating the plan, which is required to be updated once every seven years by the Commonwealth. Though much of the work will be completed by town volunteers, funding is needed to finalize the copy and publish the plan. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy. How did the Select Board vote on these?
Voted five to zero in favor of all of them.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'll now read the line item All right, I'll now read the line item number, title, and amount to be transferred from free cash for each item. If you wish to consider a line item separately, please call a hold when I read that line item's number and name, and I will remove it from the consent agenda, and we'll address it separately after all unheld items have been voted. Item one, Fire Department, Equipment for Electric Vehicle Firefighting, $8,897. Fire Department Water Supply Valves, $11,814. Line three, Select Board, Server Computer Upgrades and Replacement, $15,000. So, item four, Upgrade and Replace or Replace, Sound-Based Wi-Fi Equipment, $12,000. Item five, Upgrade and Replace Audio/Video Switching System, $10,000. Item six, Open Space and Recreation Plan Update, $10,000. All right, item six has been held. The first five items have, are now part of the consent agenda, and there is no debate on that, so we will ask for the motion on items one through five.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move favorable action and that for the following items and sums. Number one, Fire Department, Equipment for, Equipment for Electric Vehicle Firefighting, Number two, Fire Department, Water Supply Valves, $11,814. Number three, Select Board, Server Computer Upgrades and Replacement, $15,000. Number four, Select Board, Upgrade/Replace Town-Based Wi-Fi Equipment, $12,000. And number five, Select Board, Upgrade/Replace Audio/Video Switching System, $10,000. For a total of $57,711. And continue with the motion, all for the purpose as set forth, purposes as set forth in the Advisory Committee Report Table, including all incidental and related expenses, that the sum of $57,711 be transferred from free cash in the Treasury, said appropriation to be expended by June 30, 2027, with unexpected funds as of June 30, 2027, being returned to the general fund.
Second.
All right, the motion has been made and seconded. There is no debate on a consent agenda. Please vote now. Motion passes. All right, Article nine, Items.
Article eight, number six.
Yes, I'm addressing that. Article nine, item six. All right, there is a hold on that.
Richard Robinson, 117 Mill Street. I'm not opposed to the printing of this, but I find the $10,000 to be extraordinarily high estimate. Back-of-the-envelope calculations suggest we ought to be able to print it in color, full color, for 2,000, maybe 3,000 tops. That leaves 7,000 for editing and layout, and I think that's actually way too much for this. Volunteers should be doing most of that. This project should not cost nearly that much. I'm opposed to it as it's being presented.
Are there any other? I can see someone up there, but I can't actually see who it is.
Madam Moderator.
Sam Nelson, Chairman of the Open Space Committee.
Embarrassed, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay. So the main mission of the Open Space Committee is to preserve and protect Sherburne's open spaces and its recreational and environmental resources. And to that end, what we do every seven years is we produce this environmental blueprint, which is a study done, it's probably about 80 pages, 80 pages, that makes recommendations to the various town committees and boards on how to preserve our resources. A lot of towns hire consultants to do this work and pay $30,000 to $40,000 for this work. We are a citizen-authored study here, and so we're doing $10,000 for the printing and for some of the layout and for some of the special services that we will need.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further comment or question?
Madam Moderator.
Yes. Marian.
Right. I was heavily involved in production of the last Open Space and Recreation Plan, and this estimate was based on what it cost us to do the last plan. And, Richard, you're absolutely right, about $3,000 would be enough for the printing, especially since now that it's available online, we don't have to print as many copies. But, in fact, there is quite a lot of expense involved. First of all, in mapping, a lot of maps are required, and to bring our maps up to date, we're going to have to hire a consultant to help with that. These are geological and environmental maps that are difficult, and some of them are specific to the town. And the layout actually is done primarily by the Open Space Committee with, you know, with using MS Word or something, photographs and text, et cetera. But to get it publication-ready is on a whole other level of layout, and we needed a professional to do that for us. So this estimate of 10,000 is 10,000, is up to 10,000. We don't want to delay the plan by not having the funds to get the final editing and layout done, or the publishing done, because we have a deadline with the state. So I think it will probably cost less, but not a whole lot less.
Any other comments? Okay. Mr. Winters.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move favorable action and that for the purposes of layout and printing of the Open Space and Recreation Plan Update, item six is set forth in the Advisory Committee Report, including all incidental and related expenses, the sum of $10,000 be transferred from free cash in the Treasury, said appropriation to be expended by June 30, 2027, with unexpected funds as of June 30, 2027, being returned to the general fund.
Second.
The article has been moved and seconded. Is there any comment? All right then, this is a majority vote. Please vote now. Motion passes. Article 10, Opioid Settlement Receipts. Mr. Sickel.
I move favorable action and that the town establish a special revenue fund for opioid settlement receipts and that $17,271.77 be transferred from free cash to this newly-created fund.
Second.
How did the Select Board vote on this?
Select Board voted five to zero in favor.
Is there any questions, comments?
Yeah.
Debate.
So, as a parent who's unfortunately intimately aware of the opioid situation, I'm just surprised that in the wording of the article, the word prevention is not mentioned anywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? All right, debate is then closed. You can propose an amendment.
I'd like to propose an amendment that the word preventive also be, or prevention also be added to the article. Thank you.
So you'll need to fill out a form for the town clerk for that amendment. Mr. Wolf? You'll, you need to fill out a form for the town clerk for that amendment. Right behind you. We're voting on the motion. The motion is what counts.
If he needs help, I'm happy to help him with the language.
Or maybe I could clear it up.
Madam Moderator, you have a comment up here?
Yes, Darrell.
Hi, Darrell Beardsley now is Representative of the Board of Health. So the Board of Health has been talking about what we might do with these funds, and prevention is first and foremost in how we envision using it. Not exclusively, but certainly the most important part, and we will likely be working with the Charles River Health District, which is a new shared services arrangement that we've entered into with other towns, so that we'll be able to make more efficient use of the funds by sharing resources and information with others. Thanks.
Thank you, Darrell. Jeremy, do you want to just talk to Mr. Wolf to make sure that he's writing his amendment to reflect what he wants it to say?
Madam Moderator?
Yes.
I'd make two points. First of all, this is an act of the legislature that defines how the money can be spent. It's not something that we can wander too far off from what the legislature says.
Okay.
However the motion is worded, you are establishing a fund pursuant to a specifically recently adopted statute, adopted in December of 2023, signed by the governor, I think, on December 4.
I can't hear Paul, speak up a little.
There's a statute that governs this fund. It was signed by the governor on December 4, 2023. It specifies, answers to all these questions. But in any event, offering to help him put that word in, to the extent that it's okay with the Department of Revenue, it would be okay, I think, with this community.
So, Mr. Wolf? Can I read the motion to you again? Because that is what you would be amending, not the warrant article, not the advisory report. So let me read that to you again.
Okay.
Or Mr. Sickel can read it again.
Can I offer a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator. So I just wanted to comment on what I, if I understand correctly from what Mr. Marsette just showed me. So I think what you're commenting on is the advisory report commentary, and I completely agree with your point that prevention should be there, and it's, advisory is bad for not having, not having gotten, not having gotten there and not having included that, because as you said, it certainly should have been in terms of the intent of this. In terms of the motion, however, the motion is just specifically to create a special revenue fund and to transfer money that the town has received from the state, has already received from the state, into that special revenue fund. And then as Select Board Member Durensis said, the state statute specifies how that, how that can be used. So I have a sense that you're maybe unhappy with the way advisory wrote things up, and point well taken, but I'm not sure that that requires a change to the actual motion, which just says, let's create a special revenue fund, and let's transfer from the funds that the, that the town's already received into that, into that fund.
And if we can have slide 69?
Yeah, good, okay.
Put up on the, on the screen here. That is the actual wording of the motion. So if you wish to make an amendment, it would be to this language.
I'm okay.
Okay.
Madam Moderator? Just, just to clarify one last point, Town Council just advised me that within the legislation, prevention is, of course, an appropriate use of those funds.
Thank you.
Okay, great. All right, so is there any further debate on Article 10? Okay, if not, then this is a majority vote. Please vote now. Motion passes. Article 11, Use of Free Cash. Mr. Winters.
Thank you, Madam, Madam Moderator. I move that no action be taken.
Second.
And does the Select Board have anything to say?
The Select Board voted five to zero in favor.
Okay, all right. Are there, is there any comment or questions here? In favor of no action, right?
In favor of no action.
In favor of no action.
Maybe Mr. Sickel can explain why this is a vote for no action.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Moderator. So this is an article that also routinely appears every year at town meeting, and if the town were to use free cash for something other than one of the things that we've already specified, this would be the place where that would be done. But since all the uses of free cash were specified as some of the capital items and some of the special non-recurring items, there are no other expenses or items for which there is a proposal to use free cash. So advisory view then is that the proper thing to do is to vote no action, because there is nothing else for which there's a desire or a proposal to use free cash.
Okay. All right, this is a majority vote for no action. Please vote now. Motion passes. Article 12, Community Preservation Act. We have a presentation on this article by Steve Sae.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. All right, next slide. So background information on the Community Preservation Act, it became state law about 25 years ago. Since then, gradually, more and more communities have adopted it. We are up to about 70% of the population of the state now live in CPA communities, and over that time period, about $3.1 billion has been raised. So how does this work? So there are two aspects of the CPA in terms of funding. There is a local revenue portion where a surcharge of anywhere between 1 and 3% of the real estate bill gets charged. We are proposing the lowest amount possible here, 1%. Note that this is a surcharge on the tax rate, so the actual tax rate of the town does not go up, but you, your tax bill will ultimately go up. Optional exemptions include for the first $100,000 of assessed value in residential as well as commercial and industrial, we are proposing that that exemption be included, as well as an exemption for low-income residents as well as moderate-income senior residents, senior being defined as age 60 or above. So we are also proposing that that exemption be applied. Then there is the state matching fund, where essentially it is paid for by every deed that is registered at the Registry of Deeds, there is a $50 surcharge, as well as a $25 surcharge on municipal liens. So effectively, anybody who has purchased property in Sherburne, you have already paid into the state CPA fund, but because we are not a CPA community, you have seen no return on that. Essentially, you're just helping to fund. Essentially, you're just helping to fund the CPA projects for the 70% of the state that live in CPA communities. All right, next slide. So, this chart, don't worry too much about the small numbers, but this comes from the state. It just shows sort of over time how the matching funds have gone. So, you can see that early in the CPA adoption, the state matching funds has been essentially 100%. So, whatever a community raised from local revenue was matched 100% by the state. Over time, as more and more communities have adopted it, of course, the state match has gone down because the fund is, there's not enough money in the fund for 100% match. And you can see that in recent years, the past 10 years or so, the state legislature has voted to increase the funding so that essentially, the goal is to hit about 30% match from the state. And so, you can see on the right, the five-year average has been a 31% match, and the expectation is that that's approximately where the state probably wants it to be going forward. So, this is a calculation of essentially, what is the amount of revenue that Sherburne would see if we were to adopt the CPA? And we can see, we're basing this on last year's tax data, so based on the average tax bill and the average home value. And this is with the proposed $100,000 residential exemption. And now, you can see the sort of amounts based on different levels of surcharge. So, I've circled sort of at 1% with the $100,000 residential exception, approximately how much revenue would be looking at. And it's about $295,000 per year. The breakdown, you can see that the local revenue would be $213,000, and then with the expected 30% match, another $82,000 from the state. Next slide. So, what can you spend it on? There are three categories, so open space and recreation, historical preservation, and community housing. So, for each of those categories, 10% of the CPA money has to go towards each one of those, and then the remaining 70% can be spent however the town chooses. And you do not have to spend 100% of your CPA funds in any given year. You can build it up over time if you were to say, you know, identify perhaps an affordable housing project that you anticipate will cost X amount, and you might want to save up for it over a number of years. Next slide. So, now, we're looking at the types of projects that would be eligible. So, the town administrator, Jeremy Marsette, went through and looked at all of the capital appropriations that Sherburne has approved between FY 2000 and FY, well, and then the proposals for FY 25, which we've looked at this year. And essentially, in total, there have been $82 million in capital appropriations, and he estimates that about 6.8 million of that would have been eligible for CPA funding. So, that's about $275,000 per year. That's projects that we have already approved in the past. Over that time, we have basically foregone somewhere between $2 and $3.5 million of matching funds from the state. So, then, we looked at potential projects, both the five projects are ones that you saw in earlier today, and then I've outlined in orange the projects that are coming up, that are already on our capital improvement plan, that most likely would be eligible for CPA funding. So, that includes the farm plan access improvements, Jamison Fields 2 and 3, and then we were discussing the Sherburne History Museum construction. It's an undetermined amount, but for historical preservation, that would qualify for CPA funding. So, how would this work? So, essentially, if we were to pass CPA tonight, then it would go on to the November general election as a ballot question, and then it would have to pass as a ballot question. And if that passes in next year's annual town meeting, we would then establish a community preservation committee, which has to include at least five members, one representative each from the planning board, the housing partnership, Conservation Commission, Historical Commission, and Recreation Commission. There can also be up to four additional at-large members. It would be defined by a town meeting. And then, every year, this committee would have to hold an annual public hearing where they get input from the town as to what types of projects the town would like to see CPA money spent on. This committee would determine which projects would then be supported to go on to a town meeting warrant. So, each individual project would be its own article at a future town meeting, and it would go through all of the same town meeting process, which includes, you know, going before the advisory committee in a public hearing, going before the Select Board, and then, of course, town meeting just like tonight. So, why should we do this? There's multiple reasons. For me personally, I was a member of the advisory committee for six years, including the chair and the vice chair for four of those years, so I have a pretty good understanding of the financial situation of this town. I think it makes the most sense for this town as a vehicle for potentially actually reducing our tax rate because the CPA state matching funds is a source of revenue which is outside of the tax levy, and we have very few sources of funding that are outside of the tax levy. So, if we are strategic and essentially use that money towards projects that we would likely otherwise approve anyways, then essentially, we would be saving about 53% on those projects by using CPA rather than debt service, essentially. And the number that we chose, 1%, which brings in about $295,000 per year, matches up pretty closely with our historical spend rate on CPA-eligible projects, which was about $275,000. And I believe that's it.
Okay, thank you, Steve. How did the Select Board vote on this?
The Select Board on this one, actually, people are tired of hearing me say five to zero, voted four in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. All right. So, Mr. Sickle?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move favorable action and that the town become a participant in the state's Community Preservation Act by accepting Sections 3 to 7 inclusive of Chapter 44B of the general laws, otherwise known as the Massachusetts Community Preservation Act, by approving a surcharge on real property for the purposes permitted by said act, including the acquisition, creation, and preservation of open space, the acquisition, preservation, and rehabilitation and restoration of historic resources, the acquisition, creation, preservation, rehabilitation, and restoration of land for recreational use, the acquisition, creation, preservation, and support of community housing, and the rehabilitation and restoration of such open space and community housing that is acquired or created as provided under said act, provided that the surcharge on the property shall be 1% of the annual real estate tax levy against real property commencing in fiscal year 2026, and to accept the following exemptions from such surcharge permitted under Section 3E of said act. One, the first $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of residential property. Two, property owned and occupied as a domicile by any person who qualifies for low-income housing or lower moderate-income senior housing in the town, as defined in Section 2 of said act. And three, the first $100,000 of the value of each taxable parcel of Class 3 commercial property and Class 4 industrial property, as defined in Section 2A of said Chapter 59.
Second.
All right, the article has been moved and seconded, and we are now open for debate. Richard, you've been standing there for a while.
Thank you. Richard Robinson, 117 Mill Street. I am opposed to this as written. I have submitted an amendment. I don't know if that's been typed up and it's available. I can read it. It's relatively short, and I hope its intent will be relatively clear. It's to follow the recommendation in the warrant article on page 23 that ends Community Preservation Act, CPA. I would follow that by comma, provided, however, that the annual real estate tax levy in any fiscal year be reduced by an amount equivalent to the sum of any funds deposited into the Community Preservation Fund in the previous fiscal year. My intent here in making this amendment is to not raise our collective taxes, instead to allow funds to flow in from the state, and I do understand the CPA is the only way to allow that, but to offset the money that we all put into the CPA with a reduction in our taxes that would be equivalent to that amount of money. I may have twisted some of this in my own mind, but I think that the intent is clear. It seems to me as though the funds coming in from the state are a net benefit to the town. I don't see a net benefit to the rest of it. If we want to fund a project in town, we have a very good mechanism, this mechanism, for funding those projects on a case-by-case basis. I do not see the creation of the CPA with a separate bureaucracy, a separate decision-making body, and isolating it to exclusively three different kinds of projects to be a benefit for this town. Thank you.
So, Richard, I'm going to put the amendment, because you are offering an amendment to this, is that correct?
I'm sorry?
You are offering an amendment to this.
I am offering an amendment to this.
All right, so that needs to be, we're going to put it up there, but it also needs to be seconded before we can address it. All right. I will put, just a minute, Paul. I'm going to, once the amendment gets up there, I'm going to ask Town Council to address this. Okay, if you have a point of order, Paul?
Like a ruling as to whether that's beyond the scope of the article.
It's, we're going to talk about that. Town Council is going to talk about that. It's not just the scope, but is it even legal? But I thought it would be good to have the amendment up there so people can see it.
Okay, I just want to be sure amendments are not able to be made if they're beyond the scope of the article or if they're not legal. Would like that, would like an opinion on that.
I mean, from what I have read, this amendment may actually negate the article, in which case, I would rule it out of scope, but there are other issues with it that Town Council can address.
Thank you.
I want people to see it so that they will understand why I might rule it out of scope. Okay, so this is, is this your amendment, Richard? Is that accurate, reflected? Yeah, and I'm inclined to rule this out of scope because in my opinion, it negates the article, and I would ask Town Council to speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Heather White, Town Council. I do agree. Yeah, maybe I'll get a little closer. How's that? So, I do have some concerns legally about the legality of what this amendment would seek, where the Community Preservation Act doesn't contain any mechanism for the tax levy to be reduced by a corresponding amount that matches the surcharge in any given year. And really, the only, town meeting doesn't have any statutory authority to reduce an annual tax levy. The taxes are a product of the annual budget and the expenses that are set forth therein. And really, the only way to reduce the amount that can be levied would be through an underride, which is not addressed in the scope of this article.
So, I am going to rule this out of scope of the article. Okay, so now, we're back to the main motion, and debate is open. Mr. Kingsley, I think, was, I don't know who was here.
Well, I want to commend Richard for a brilliant idea. I wish I'd thought of it myself. I'm disappointed that we don't think it's legal. If we can't do this, I think we should vote this down because this is plain and simple, a tax increase on everyone in this room in perpetuity. With all due respect to our presenter, the tax basis is not $16,000 per year on average. It's $18,000 per year, the real estate tax bills. I noticed that in the warrant, this was not unanimous. Mr. Waldron, you said four, one. Why does the warrant say seven, two? Does that include advisory? Okay, so at least two people on this stage voted against this. I would recommend everybody take at least 30 seconds to read the minority opinion, minority report at the bottom of page 23. It's only six sentences long. I think it very clearly lays out why this is a bad idea. You're essentially creating, my words, not the minority reports, a slush fund for indeterminate use. As Richard accurately said, we have a mechanism for deciding what we're going to spend money on as a town, and it's called town meeting. So, I vote, I propose that we vote against this. Thank you.
Nancy?
If we had an account of discretionary funds, this would be a lovely gift for future taxpayers so they could pay our cash for the big-ticket items and not incur borrowing fees, but we do not have any such funds, especially for a small town with a very limited tax base and the character we try to preserve. We have done and continue to do a decent job investing in all these eligible areas. At least half of Sherburne is already either entirely off the tax roll or on at a reduced rate because of a special classification or use restriction. Those of us who have been here for 30 years or more have invested in fields, tennis courts, farm pond, and places like Barber Reservation and Rail Trail to add to other venues to provide active and passive recreation and open space. At the groundbreaking for Leland Farms, Barney Frank commended Sherburne for stepping up as towns like Sherburne were not moving on affordable housing. We now have multiple projects on the table. We also have been very fortunate to have dedicated unpaid people committed to preserving our history, caring for our artifacts, and asking very little in financial support. While for years we suffered the dubious honor of the second-highest tax bill, we kept our excellent schools, safety services, and government programs competing with the best, using our AAA bond rating, spreading the cost in smaller bites over multiple years and multiple sets of taxpayers. CPA tax does not help the taxpayers who live here today. We already have significant obligations. As now the fifth-highest tax bill in the state, CPA surcharge takes hundreds of thousands of dollars from taxpayers now before we have committed the first dollar that will be called taxes to today's wants, needs, and already incurred debt. We are stuck with it for a minimum of five years, compressing significant money out of pocket into fewer years and fewer sets of taxpayers. Please vote no on this article.
Thank you, Nancy. Dave?
Dave Goldberg, 23 Broadle Path. So, I'm in favor of the CPA. There are many communities in Massachusetts that have been using it for years to help pay for some of the things that we voted on tonight. As you can see, I mean, we're leaving money on the table essentially because the things we voted on even tonight, we're paying for 100% out of pocket, right? So, the idea of the CPA is to help offset that. It's not, it's not above and beyond because we're essentially every year voting for these things anyway. So, I strongly support the CPA so that we can take some of the burden off the town and not necessarily have to fund these 100% ourselves.
Thanks, Dave. I'm going to go up back here because I think you've been waiting for a while.
Thank you. Stephen Violin, 15 Snow Street. I also serve as president of Upper
I also serve as president of Upper Charles Conservation Land Trust, and would like to convey the endorsement of the land trust of the CPA here in Sherburne as well as across the state. It's been a useful conservation tool for our neighbors. Our board is constructed to represent all towns in our watershed, about half of which have adopted the CPA, and many have found it to be an invaluable resource to their towns. As a citizen of Sherburne, I also believe it's going to be a very useful tool to manage capital projects as we go forward, as well as ongoing expenses in support of our recreational opportunities throughout the town.
Thank you. Sally?
Sally Brody, 7 Curve.
Speak up to the mic, thanks.
Sally Brody, 7 Curve Street. We are told that we know what the CPA will be spent on, but we don't really. We know there is a wish list, but nothing says it will remain the same over the years as priorities do change. We also know what these funds can be spent on is restricted, and there are even some limitations on those things, plus a dedicated 10% to each is required, needed or not. The committee will be formed to find projects that qualify and to decide what should be put before the voters at Town Meeting for an up or down vote. They are required to have hearings, but they are not required to honor any opinions. When a bucket of money is waiting and there is no pressing project waiting, will we be so careful about how it is spent? We are told we should get some of the money we pay at the Registry of Deeds back. How many times this year have you recorded a document at the Registry of Deeds? We should only pay for what we determine here at the annual Town Meeting after carefully analyzing every proposed purchase and project, deciding its value to us as a town and how to pay for it. We already dig deeper than most of our fellow Commonwealth dwellers just to maintain the standard of living we determine necessary. Please vote no.
No, we don't applaud.
Madam Moderator?
Next. Go ahead.
My name is Art Schnorr, 25 Woodland Street. Back in the early 2000s, we voted on this at the same Town Meeting, and I was, I was very enthusiastic in favor of it, but it went down by quite a margin. It was a good deal back then, because there was a lot more money come from the state, but I think it's still a good deal now. If we just recall what this actually is, the name of this is the Community Preservation Act, and I think it really helps us to do things in town that might otherwise be neglected or put off, just as we've seen tonight in the ballfields right there. So, I think that if we pass this, I think that whatever committee that has created to administer this will be wise in trying to utilize the money to help offset our tax burden. Certainly, there'll be some more, but at least we'll get 30% back, extra back. So, I think that a town like Framingham that adopted this has actually made some big changes over there. I'm not saying we're like Framingham, we're a different community, of course, but it just is, it allows people to have, really, to focus on these really vital things we have in our town that make us special, like open space, the recreation, the affordable housing, the historic commission, et cetera. So, I think this is a good idea to go through with it now, even though it has not a good deal as it was back in the early 2000s. So, I urge you to vote yes on this, and I think it'd be a great thing for the town. Thank you.
Dave?
I just have a question or point of clarification. Stephen, can you specify whether or not the items that are voted on by the CPA committee are still voted on at Town Meeting as well? So, this isn't an opportunity to bypass Town Meeting approving the items that the CPA committee has decided to spend money on?
That's correct. So, the Community Preservation Committee is just the body which decides which projects to bring to Town Meeting, and then essentially, this body would evaluate and vote for or against each project individually. And again, like I said, like with every other Town Meeting article, it would go through the entire same review process that the entire warrant goes through in front of advisory, in front of the Select Board, and then, of course, in front of Town Meeting.
Addie Mae?
Addie Mae Weiss, 1 Jackson Road. Just, I think the first question that I was thinking was, answering was that, yes, these items would still be voted on at Town Meeting. There's no slush fund that goes unchecked. And secondly, it's understood that in the past, when this was brought forward, the uses of these funds were limited, and that has changed greatly. The options for using these funds are as simple as our neighbors in Ashland are using it to paint the interior of an old library. So, things that would need to be done anyway, you are now using funds that are receiving some partial match from the state. So, I think, as the previous slide showed, we have a number of things every year that are maintenance and updates and things that have to get done anyway, so why not take advantage of having the match? We're going to be spending that money one way or another as a town, and it's nice to have it offset with some assistance.
Madam Moderator?
Just a quick comment on the, yes.
Just a minute, did you have a point of order, or you just wanted to speak?
No, I was responding.
No, I'm, whoa, whoa, whoa.
I've been trying to get your attention for a while now, so I'm actually ahead of some of these people in line to speak.
I'm sorry? What is your?
Yeah, I think you're recognized.
May I, may I speak in favor of adoption of this?
All right, I didn't see you. Sure, go ahead.
I wanted to answer the question that this was going to be a perpetual fee or tax forever, and instead, those of us on the Board of Selectmen who voted for this, voted for this to be an experiment, that by law, we can end this in five years. And so, what we wanted to do was to conduct an experiment, see if the projections, the calculations, the projects matched up with the predictions. At the end of that five years, all of us would have a chance to look at whether those predictions that the state would be helping us in a way that they haven't before actually worked for the community. And equally so, that if it did not work for the community, if things went awry, that we had the ability and we would support and effort to end this Community Preservation Act. So, the word that I would put on this is, this is going to be an experiment to see if this truly pays off for us as a way, as Select Board Member Stephen Seid said, a way to generate more money from the state, to help us with costs that we would otherwise be incurring, with the understanding if that doesn't work, and if all these things that people say are going to happen, these terrible things are going to happen, we can fix it. Please let us have this experiment and see where it goes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kingsley, sorry.
Well, just to that, I mean, where does it say in the proposal that it only lasts five years? And who's going to rescind it?
That's the law.
Town Meeting. Every five years it has to be.
So, we get to vote on it again in five years?
Can I address that, actually?
Sure. The law allows us to rescind it in five.
It does not automatically expire in five years, but when we, if we were to vote it through today, then it would have to last for at least five years, at which point it could be rescinded by any, you know, future.
That wasn't why I stood up here. I was responding to your point about how each project would still come before Town Meeting. While that is technically true, they will be in the context of an existing fund, and it'll be viewed as, hey, we've got this money and the state's going to pay for some piece of it, maybe it's 2%, maybe it's 20%. So, there's going to be a huge motivation to spend this money, whether we want to or not. So, I go back to, this is essentially a slush fund that we don't know what we're going to spend it on, so please vote against.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf?
Yeah, so, my grandmother used to say that you can't have your butt in two chairs at the same time, but unfortunately, I think, I feel a little bit of both ways about this. You know, on the one hand, do we really want to add another 1% to our tax for, I mean, we already see the problems that people don't want to come into our town and buy real estate because of the tax, the taxes they already pay. So, we're already in the top 10%. Now, we're going to add another 1% to that number, whether it's a surcharge, whether it's included or not. On the other hand, you know, will, what we do with this money, will it enhance the town enough to make up for the, you know, for having that high tax rate? The other thing is that will, I think you said it, will we have the discipline to say that this money is, instead of all those Prop 2 and 1/2s that we voted for today and increased our taxes, and this is, instead of it, it's not in addition to it? So, I think that's another thing we need to consider, and I think I heard, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Madam Wolf?
No relation.
Is, that this is, we're really voting for this to put this on the slate of election for November, and not whether we're going to do it or not. Thank you.
Madam Moderator?
May I, may I make a comment?
Yes, Marion.
Yeah, Marion Neutras, Select Board. I voted for this. I've voted for it twice before, when the town turned it down, but I'm still in favor of it, because for one thing, we, the state is supplementing the fund. It's not just coming from deed transfers. The state has to supplement it every year to keep that match up to, now it's what, 35, 40%? They're not going to let it drop from there. They're committed to keeping that up, and the extra money coming from the state into that fund is your taxpayer money. You're paying into that CPA fund, and then the funds are being dispersed to the, what is it, over 100 towns in the state that receive the funds every year. They're getting your taxpayer money, and we're not getting any of that benefit. So, I would bear that in mind, and I also have more faith in the wisdom of Town Meeting than maybe some others do. I think people do debate well here, and do, people do criticize projects, and will keep in mind what the town really needs, not just finding something to spend it on in the slush fund. And then, the final point I want to make is, is to keep the amounts in perspective. Let's say, as you suggested, the annual tax bill in a house is $18,000. That's a lot of money. Some of us pay much less, some pay more, but $18,000. So, more taxes added to that, well, how much would it amount to? $180 a year. So, $180 a year is not a huge sacrifice for anyone who can afford a house that has $18,000 taxes, and you could say the same thing for a small house with $10,000 tax, it would be $100 a year, or a little less because of the discount. So, just putting into perspective, and finally, yeah, all those other towns in Massachusetts that have adopted this, some of them 20 years ago, have done the experiment, and so far, to my knowledge, and Steve's knowledge, I think, no town has decided to rescind it. So, there must be something good here, and I think Sherburne should take advantage of it. Thanks.
Peter?
Thank you. Peter Moore, 45, Old Orchard Road. I just had one question and then a comment. So, if I read it correctly, the surcharge does not then interact with Prop 2 and 1/2 levy limits, is that right? So, this would be outside of that, is that right?
Correct.
So, in terms of when the town is like butting up against the levy limits, this is actually a way in which money can be raised essentially for town expenditures that it's otherwise spending, but doing it in a much more cost-effective way, because it's not borrowing the money, and it's also getting approximately a 30% match from the state?
That's correct. That's actually one of the primary motivations for me bringing it up this year, is that if you look at a trend of the town's excess levy capacity over the past several years, that has been shrinking rapidly, and Dan Sickel has done a projection, and, you know, as you know, we are probably going to be hitting the levy limit pretty soon, and so one way to essentially relieve that is to find sources of revenue that are outside of the levy, and so there are very few that are actually reasonably available to us, and this one is a very, it's a small one, but it is pretty easy to get.
So, if I understand correctly, and I think I'd advocate for this, is basically our tax rate would go down, our effective tax rate would go down, because we're already spending this money already on projects in town, essentially capital budget projects in town, but then we're getting a match from the state. So, it does on its face appear to be like a tax increase of the 1%, as others have mentioned, but over the long term, the effective tax rate would actually go down, because we're already going to be spending this money on, for example, our capital budget was about 1.8 million or something like this year, and we're talking about only $300,000 of that. And so, for me, it really goes to kind of the fabric of the, and this gentleman who spoke earlier talked about the Community Preservation Act, right? It goes to the fabric of what we are in our town and what the things that we value, and that's what the money is going to be allocated and expended towards, things that we already spend today, much more than actually the 1% that we would get here. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to respond to some of the comments, so actually, so Nancy, what you said about the fact that this town has historically done a very good job in all of the three categories for which CPA funding is allowed, to me, that's actually an argument in favor of adopting CPA, because essentially, we're saying that historically, we have spent this money in these categories anyways, and so the CPA is a way, simply an alternate funding vehicle for these types of projects, one that is supplemented by the state, and essentially, we're just saying, these are the things that we historically spend money on anyways, and I'm just saying, why would we spend 53% more money by not adopting CPA? And again, if we look at this, like Paul said, as a five-year experiment, we have a six-year capital improvement plan. We already know what is on our schedule for capital in the upcoming five years during which this CPA would be, essentially, we would not have the ability to rescind it. And already, within the five-year capital plan, there are enough projects that would qualify for CPA that are most likely greater than the amount of revenue that we received during that five-year period. So, it isn't really true that we have no idea what we're going to spend it on. We already have a pretty good idea what we're likely to spend it on. Each of those projects would have to get approved by Town Meeting, so I can't say right now that three years from now, we are going to approve a Jameson Three Field improvement or farm pond improvements. I can't say that we definitely will, but we've already got it targeted, so it's really not a big question mark. We already know, and I'm saying, why would we spend 53% more on it?
Robert?
Robert Johnson, 272 Western Avenue. This CPA tax proposal was first brought up in 2002 and was wisely voted down. It was again brought up in 2005 and again voted down by the town by 71% against. Why did the town vote so heavily against it? Because it was a bad idea. This tax would create a pot of gold for unknown projects. This pot of gold, your tax money, would get bigger and bigger. The CPA Tax Committee would want to spend it. They could propose a project that would not stand on its own two feet and say that it is good, because we already have the money, and therefore, it won't cost you anything. The better way to do projects is the way we have always done them. done them. The proponents go to the selectmen, the capital budget committee, and other involved committees with their proposal. This process assures that it becomes thoroughly vetted. It is then reviewed by the advisory committee, and then comes before us here. If we vote in favor, the town issues a bond, and the project gets built. We enjoy the project while we, who voted for it, pay off the bond. You pay after it is built, not before you even know what the project might be. If we go with this CPA tax and create a pot of gold, I guarantee you that the CPA Tax Committee will come up with ways to spend it. It will be like giving your teenager a credit card. We should vote down this CPA tax proposal and continue to thoroughly vet our projects before we spend our tax dollars. Vote wisely. Vote no CPA tax. Thank you.
Nancy?
I'd just like to respond to what Steve said. Yes, perhaps we will spend this on some of the things that we've spent money on. But the thing is, when we had a million-dollar project, we would spread that expense over a long period of time by bonding it. So, we would take longer to pay for it, but it would be less painful coming out of our pockets. Whereas, this million dollars gets squashed into about three or four years, and it comes out of our pocket before we know how we're going to spend it. So, again, I urge you to vote no.
Yes.
David Strauss, 75, Nathan Hill Road. I move the question.
All right. So, we need a slide for, two-thirds to move the question. We need a slide to take a vote. Ready? Okay. Call the question. Please vote now.
What are we voting on?
Whether, call the question. Okay, that passes. All right, debate is closed. Motion's been made and seconded. This is a majority vote. Please vote now. Motion passes. Article 13, Retail License for the Sale of Alcoholic Beverages. Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move favorable action, and that the town authorize the Select Board to file a petition with the General Court to obtain special legislation to allow the town to convert one license for the sale of wine and malt beverages not to be drunk on premises to a license for the sale--
Could I ask people leaving to leave quietly, please?
--to a license for the sale of all alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on premises. Such petition to include such additional provisions as the Select Board deems appropriate.
Second.
Motion's been moved and seconded. How did the Select Board vote on this?
Select Board voted 5 to 0 in favor.
All right. Is there any debate, comment, questions? Okay, I do not see any. This is a majority vote. Please vote now. Motion passes. Article 14, amend Section 4.9 of Affordable Housing. We have a presentation by Addie May Weiss, Chair of the Planning Board. And would you include in your presentation, whether the Planning Board has voted on this?
Yes, the Planning Board has unanimously supported this article. And so, yes, here's, Planning Board Warren, Article 14 is asking to amend Section 4.9 of the Affordable Housing Zoning Bylaw. And we use zoning bylaws to guide the kinds of housing that we like to see in our community. Challenging housing costs and supply is something the state of Massachusetts has been attempting to address since 1969, when the Comprehensive Permit Law, we all know as Chapter 40B, was enacted. Towns which do not have 10 percent deed-restricted affordable housing are subject to development under 40B, which overrides local regulations. Sherburne has approximately 3 percent of townwide housing classified as affordable. Affordable housing can be built in different ways. Sherburne's amendment strives to encourage developers to use our local bylaws. So, how did our Affordable Housing Bylaw come to be? We've been working on this since 2016. As you can see on what's projected here, a lot of research went into developing Sherburne's Affordable Housing Bylaw. We hosted workshops with regional planners and state housing experts, and looked at many zoning examples in other towns, and we came up with our current zoning bylaw. The resulting 2020 bylaw was our first attempt at local affordable housing bylaws. Next slide. So, the 2020 Affordable Housing Bylaw required developments of two or more housing units to include 15 percent affordable, either built or via payment in lieu to try and make quicker gains in achieving the state's 10 percent goal. The intent of two as a trigger was out of concerns we heard from other towns of subdivisions created of one less number house than the trigger. So, let's see. So, why amend this bylaw? Well, we do have a process available to learn from our experience, and we can update bylaws through town meeting vote. As a town, historically, we don't get many new subdivision applications. The current bylaw has not produced any affordable unit. And so, we are looking for ways to improve the bylaw, because Sherburne's bylaw is more stringent than similar towns and may drive developers to 40B development. Development costs are already high in Sherburne due to infrastructure challenges, and there's a need for consistency with other affordable housing bylaws. So, next slide is, so what are the proposed changes? The changes we're asking for are fairly simple. First, we are asking to raise the bylaw unit trigger, the unit number trigger, from two units to six units of housing. And second, the required percentage of affordable units be 10 percent instead of 15 percent. And lastly, is an administrative change to update the name of the state agency formerly known as DHCD to EOHCL, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities. And both, the Planning Board is hoping that you will join with both advisory and Select Board in voting to, in favor of these changes. We hope these amendments will encourage developers to work with Sherburne locally.
Thank you. And the Select Board?
Yes, the Select Board actually had one person recuse themselves and voted two in favor and two opposed. So, we effectively took no action on this.
Okay. Thank you. And, okay, Mr. Sickel?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. I move favorable action, and that the town amend the zoning bylaws, Section 4.9 Affordable Housing, with the changes shown in the advisory report. Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? Frank?
Frank Hess, South Main Street. The selectmen that voted against it, could you share your reasoning with this and the logic that, why you were against this?
Well, it was too for and too against. I think the people that were against the change wanted to stick with 15 percent affordable, rather than dropping it down to 10 percent, is my impression.
Is there any other comment or discussion? Okay, this is a two-thirds vote. Are we set to go here? Okay. Please vote now. Motion passes. Article 15, Amendment to the Longevity Policy Adopted at the 2023 Town Meeting. This is a citizens' petition. Nancy?
I, oh, sorry. I consider this amendment to the-- I consider this amendment to the longevity policy that we adopted last year, housekeeping, and the simplest way to make the policy fair and inclusive, which was the original intent. Originally, it was intended that all benefit-eligible employees would be able to participate. The only two benefited exclusions were to be for those positions that were able to negotiate longevity in an agreement such as through a contract or union. In the process of preparing the presentation to town meeting, it became clear that any elected benefited position would require a separate explanation and a separate vote, because any compensation for such a position requires separate disclosure, as we do in the budgets. We would have already voted the budget, and there was an article to eliminate one of the elected positions. So, there was a fear that the complexity that already existed in a thorough explanation of the new policy would just be greatly exacerbated if we had to do added steps. The whole thing might fail. There was much discussion and debate as to a possible workaround, but there was no quick and easy resolution, so we went forward with the simplest version. Now, we have only one elected benefited position, the town clerk. And this position meets every other requirement in the policy, so the inequity needs to be corrected. To achieve the mandate in the amendment, we only need to remove the two words, "and elected," from the listed exclusions. All the other requirements are well spelled out, and that position will fit nicely in compliance. I urge your support.
Okay, Mr. Winters?
Thank you, Madam Moderator.
The Select Board voted 5 to 0 in favor.
Oh, sorry.
I move favorable action, and that the town amends the longevity policy adopted at the annual town meeting of 2023 by removing the provision to exclude a benefit-eligible elected employee, and to provide for the inclusion of a benefit-eligible elected employee who meets all of the other necessary requirements designated in the accepted policy. And that for this purpose, $518 be transferred from the free cash in the treasury to the town clerk's budget for fiscal year 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion, questions, comments? Okay, this is a majority vote. Please vote now. Motion passes. I think we're done. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second. All in favor? Thank you, and good evening.